I'll turn on the mic so everybody can hear. Let's call the meeting to order. It's 7:02 on April 15th. Let's go ahead and start. If you don't mind, we start every day with a prayer and with a roll call and a pledge of allegiance. So we'll do that in reverse order. So please go ahead and stand, remove your hats. So Heavenly Father, we have gathered here today for the Planning Commission meeting. We humbly ask for your guidance and wisdom in our deliberation. Grant us discernment to see the needs of our community clearly and the foresight to make decisions that promote the responsible development while honoring the character of our county. May our discussions be respectful, thoughtful, and focused on the greater good. Help us to listen attentively to all perspectives, weigh options with fairness, and ultimately choose what's best for the future of our county. We thank you for your presence with us today and ask that you bless this work and all that we do today. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we get a roll call, please?
Kevin Kirkwood.
Present.
Robert Politik.
Here.
Dan Sands. DeeDee Shot Grace.
Here.
John Gresham.
Here.
Nicole Hunt. Kyle Donardo. Dan McCon. And Diana Edstrom. Commissioner, you have a quorum.
Fantastic. Please, everybody take a minute to turn off your cell phones. And please take us, you know, the privacy of the cell phones is a great thing, but, you know, we need to keep them turned off. Staff report. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate it. Mark Ebner, Director of Community Development, other planning commissioners, and we've been reviewing our fellow citizens and our staff.
Items that you made recommendations on back on April 1 in the last Planning Commission meeting, that was the Cook rezone and Shaw rezone. Both of those went forward to the Board of County Commissioners on April 9, and those both were approved. And then one other item, just to remind folks on the Planning Commission, we do have a work-study session planned for next Tuesday, April 22 at 6:00 p.m. And we will discuss proposed land use regulation updates. And that concludes my updates. Thanks.
On the working group session, are we aligned that we'll have that broadcast to the public?
Pardon me, I didn't quite hear that.
For the working group session, will we have that broadcast to the folks that are online?
I don't know, Mr. Chair, if we have that technology in place yet, but I will certainly follow up and circle back with you and let you know.
Please.
Thank you.
I think that's a good requirement for us going forward.
Thank you very much.
Tonight, for citizens' comments, we allow five minutes, and so we're going to continue that process. And so if you have, you know, three minutes, it goes by incredibly fast. So if you would like to speak, you'll have an opportunity to speak for five minutes. So first up, we have citizens' comments on any matter that is not presented to the board tonight. Oh, thank you. Please state your name.
I've started, too.
You know the drill.
I do. Carrie Giblets, 19656 Widomire Road, Caio, Colorado. I sit on the Board of the Elbert County Environmental Alliance, which is a grassroots group that was brought into being about three and a half years ago in opposition to Excel Power Pathways route through Elbert County. I know that you will be receiving the application on this probably within the next six months. It is a huge application. I can't tell you the number of hours that I have spent reading over it and comparing it to the 1041s. And I know how many applications you have to look at, and I know that it's going to be very difficult for you to read it carefully and with the thought that's going to be required in order to do what's best for our county. So for tonight, I just want to bring forward two points from the 1041s that I want you to pay special attention to. Section J16 talks about financial burden to county residents, and the application has to prove that there will not be an undue burden to the county residents. The power pathway will cause property values to decrease, which is a financial burden to our county residents. There is also an increased risk associated with the transmission lines that these transmission lines may increase residents' insurance rates. This is an undue burden on our county citizens. Several residents have businesses that will be affected by the presence of these power transmission lines. This is an undue burden on our county residents. Section J23 talks about the balance between benefits and losses, and the application has to describe the foreseeable benefits to the county, landowners and local economy created by the project, and then balance that against the losses. There are no benefits for our county. Elbert County receives none of the electricity that will be generated by this power pathway, and not only will we not see any benefits from it, the decrease in property values will affect the tax base, the property taxes that go to support our local services. So there is a huge discrepancy between the benefits and the losses. So those are just two points I wanted to give you to think about now. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens' comments?
Good evening. Don Gray, 16,000 Highway 86. I also am on the ECA board. As Carrie spoke to, for the last three and a half years, we've been opposed to Excel's Power Pathway route through Elbert County. We've been in contact with the other 13 counties that are going to be impacted by the Power Pathway progress. They're being bullies. They're going to do it. They're going to expect you just to roll over and accept what they're saying. At, we don't believe it has any face value to it, but they're going to try to do that. As Carrie speaks to, there's going to be several issues that you're going to have to deal with. Probably one of the biggest 1041s that you're going to ever have to deal with in this county. What we're asking for from the citizens is to do your due diligence. Read those. It's a very long application. Once you get it on your table, you're going to, it's going to take some time to delve into it and quite understand what they're trying to do and how they're approaching to do it. I've been going to a lot of commissioners' meetings and a lot of planning meetings. This is a pretty good turnout that you have here right now, and I think it's going to be indicative of what you're going to see to come because that's what this Power Pathway means, more solar and more wind in Elbert County. And you're going to have it on your desk to try to figure out to deny or accept what they're offering to us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak? With that, our closed citizen comments. I don't believe we have any meeting minutes to approve, so we'll just jump right into the public hearing process. This is a quasi-judicial committee. We've been told that we were a citizens' committee in the past. We are that plus. We are also a group that is here to judge the value of what the CDS components bring to the table for each one of the elements that we're on for a hearing, and we are also here to validate whether we've met the commitment to the county that each one of the applicants bring. So with that in mind, we will go through the process. I will open up the testimony with the chairperson and open the public hearing with the first one, which is the WF rezone. And with that, we will have staff presentation. We'll go through a laundry list of things that we need to go through. Please be patient with us as we go through this. It is kind of a structured dance. With that, WF rezone, please.
Awesome. Thank you, Commissioner. For the record, my name is Kelsey Landem, and I'm with the Elbert County Planning Department. And tonight, I will be presenting WF Real Estate Rezone. That is case number RZ-2024-0023. So about the project, with no official address yet, the subject property is located at parcel number 6425100023. It is just over 40 acres in size and is currently zoned agriculture. The applicant is John Wilson, and like I mentioned, he is requesting to rezone the entire 40 acres from agriculture to residential agriculture. In the next few slides, I'll have the subject property depicted by the red star. The property is located directly southeast of Sun Country subdivision and north of EC West. The property has historically been vacant, and there are no structures on the property. And once again, the property is currently zoned agriculture. The surrounding properties are zoned agriculture, residential agriculture, agriculture-residential, or Planned Unit Development, also known as a PUD. The closest RA property, which is the zone district the applicant is proposing to be, is approximately 5.6 miles to the west along County Road 174. And the closest AR properties border the subject property, less than 500 feet away to the east. I want to emphasize that the only difference between an RA property and an AR zone property is one development standard, which is the lot with requirement. For an RA property, it is 200 feet, and for an AR property, it's 250 feet. Both zone districts allow for a 10-acre lot minimum. And here is a snippet of their rezone exhibit. The property line is outlined in yellow with the road named Winner's Circle in red. The entire property is currently known as Parcel D. And looking at their timeline, their pre-application meeting was in January of 2024. Community meeting was March of 2024. Their formal application was deemed complete in August of '24, and their referral period was September of '24. This item went before the Planning Commission on April 1 of this year, however, was continued to tonight's hearing. This item is scheduled to go to the Board of County Commissioners next week on April 23. All noticing requirements met the Elbert County zoning regulations, and the project was in compliance. At the community meeting, there was one person in attendance outside the applicant and Elbert County planning staff. The one person did not have any major concerns. Their inquiry was if Parcel H of the subdivision had been subdivided yet. It was relayed that there hadn't been no formal application for Parcel F, nor had it been subdivided. Other than that, the planning department has not received any other public comment. And these are the referral agencies that reviewed the application. Rattlesnake Fire Department did not respond during the referral period. However, a signed fire protection form from the Rattlesnake chief was provided in the application package. All referral comments have been provided in tonight's packet along with the applicant's response letter to those comments. Per the last Planning Commission hearing, there were some referral comments that were needing clarification, specifically the Division of Water Resources, Colorado Geological Survey, and CORE. These three referral agencies were asked to provide more clarification after the April 1 hearing on their previous responses. Those agencies then clarified that there are no outstanding objections on the rezone application and essentially approved of the rezone. These comments were provided in tonight's packet as well. Other than that, there are no outstanding objections or comments from any of the referral agencies. And with that, the approval criteria. So Article 3C4 of the Elbert County zoning regulations require the following six criteria to be met for a rezone application. A, the rezone is generally consistent with the goals and policies of the Elbert County Comprehensive Plan. This rezone is consistent with those goals and policies. B, the rezone is compatible with surrounding land uses. This rezone is compatible with surrounding land uses. C, the rezone will not adversely impact public services. It was found that the rezone would not impact public services. D, the rezone would not adversely impact the environment. It was found that the rezone would not impact the environment. E, the rezone will not create unreasonable traffic congestion or burden the existing road system. This rezone will not create unreasonable traffic. The original prop, or the original owner of the property was required to install a two entrance point road throughout the whole subdivision by Public Works. Public Works has reviewed this rezone application and has no objections. And finally, F, the rezone will not be detrimental to the present or future inhabitants of Elbert County. It was found that this rezone will not be detrimental to those in Elbert County. So based on the review of the approval criteria found in Elbert County zoning regulations, Article 3C4, and the findings in the staff report, staff recommends approval with conditions of the WF Real Estate Rezone. Those conditions are, number one, the applicant shall remove signs within two weeks of the conclusion of all notified meetings, public hearings, or decision. Signs not removed within two weeks may be removed by Elbert County subject to reasonable charges for removal. Number two, the rezone will not become effective until all the fees are paid, conditions of approval are met, and the rezone exhibit is recorded. And finally, three, recordation of all appropriate documentation is to occur within 180 days of BOCC approval. And that concludes my presentation. The applicant is present tonight. Shall the commission have any questions? I'm also available for questions.
Thanks, Kelsey. Appreciate it. Would the applicant like to speak? Back here. That's all right. But, you know, it was something that we did need to see the detail, and you'll get some more questions based on what we saw on the detail.
Okay, all right. My name is John Wilson. I'm the controlling member of WF Real Estate. I live at 9366 Oakbrush Way in Lone Tree, and thanks for your consideration.
Thank you. At this point, we'll go ahead and ask if anybody would like to speak on this matter. So Kevin Malden, just a quick question for you. This is not your, the one you want to speak about, correct? Perfect. I'm assuming you're Kevin because you're shaking your head. Thank you. Okay, with that being said, the public comment is closed. And at this point, I'd like to turn this over to the staff or to the Planning Commission to talk and address any questions that they may have. We started on the left-hand side last time. DeeDee, are you ready for questions? Fair enough. Nicole?
Hey there. You know, I don't have any questions, but I did want to say to the applicant and to the staff, thank you for bringing this back with a very clear grid of what the referral agency said and how the follow-up conversation went, the follow-up emails. I just felt like this time, the packet was super complete, easy to follow, and I really appreciate you taking the time to make sure that we could do our due diligence. So I have no questions, and thank you for a good packet.
Thank you. Kyle?
No, I don't have any questions.
Go ahead.
Nope, I just have one. What's the latest status of the road?
I last drove the road about three weeks ago, and it seemed pretty complete. 60-foot gravel road. I don't know if it's been approved yet.
And I can speak on that. Public Works has inspected and approved the road.
Oh, and I wanted to thank staff also for getting that packet all put together, so thank you.
Robert?
No questions, and yeah, the format for the packet and the layout, really, really nice. Thank you.
John?
No questions.
Yeah? Van? You got to stop. That's probably not a good thing. Dan and Van. Probably a bad thing. Okay, Van and Dan.
Van, Dan.
Nice. Okay, so humor aside, I did look at the property. I do know that the next step is to have the CDS director approve the minor plot. I look forward to seeing the result of that. I looked at the land and saw that there was a little bit of ups and downs on this, and so it was an interesting challenge for how the, how the land was going to be positioned, how the, the units were going to be planned, or the acreage was going to be planned. My only other question was, has anybody driven the road from the Planning Commission or from the planning staff?
Yes.
And what did you think?
We drove out there. My planning manager and I drove out there this afternoon. I thought it looked great. I was happy with it.
Perfect. Didn't feel like you were going to come off the road. Okay.
Not at all. No.
Fantastic. Okay. With that, any other comments or questions from the Planning Commission? I'll entertain a motion.
Me again. I make a motion that the Planning Commission make a recommendation of approval to the Board of County Commissioners for case RZ-2024-0023, subject to the following conditions. As recommended in the staff report, applicant will be required to remove the public hearing signs within 14 days of the decision by the Board of County Commissioners. The rezone shall not become effective until all fees are paid, conditions of approval are met, and the exhibit is recorded. And three, recordation of all appropriate documentation to occur within 180 days of the Board of County Commissioners' approval.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So all for this recommendation?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. So thank you. Appreciate it. Good luck. And with that, we'd like to move on to the major 1041 for Sundance. And so it'll probably, I don't know if you're ready, Jennifer, but we'll go ahead and get started.
Almost, Commissioner. Thank you. If the commission will allow, I would request that we do, staff and the applicant give a single presentation for both the major 1041 permit and the SUR. The requests are quite similar. And then a single public comment session as well. And then at the end, we would require two separate motions, two separate votes. I think that'll eliminate a little bit kind of confusion if that's all right with the commission.
I think that's good for me. Anybody else opposed to that idea? Nicole, you look a little concerned.
Yeah, I mean, we just have different sets of criteria, so. My only concern would be that there's a very different set of criteria for both of those requests. So combining it into one big discussion would seem to me kind of blur the lines of what we're actually trying to discern that we've, that we've met when we're discussing the criteria.
Okay, can we split our brains and chop the two up so that they're separate and distinct in our minds so that we can present both cases?
We need to be really intentional about that because it's, that's the only fair way to do it to the applicant and also to the community.
I agree.
I agree.
With that being said, we'll go ahead and present both, but we will retain the right to ask questions on the separate issues at hand and separate elements that we're discussing. Makes sense?
Absolutely.
Fantastic.
I'm going to pass out quickly some additional packet materials, and then I'll get started.
Okay, thank you.
Wendy?
Mr. Chair, for the record, if you would open both public hearings for the presentation, please.
Yeah, give us just a minute to do a quick scan of what we're seeing here. I, I'm a little concerned that we're talking about different parcels, and we've changed things up a little bit, so give us a minute if you don't mind. Planning Commission, give me a nod when you're ready. John, you're good, Dan? Dan, Van? Van, Dan? I don't know. Okay. How are y'all doing down here? Are we ready? There's a lot in there. Yeah. I'm assuming you're going to go through the documentation, the additional exhibits?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Jennifer, can I assume that all these are dated from April 14th?
I'm sorry?
Are all of these additions from April 14th? Yesterday?
They're all since the, since the packet was prepared.
Okay. How are we doing down there? As good as it can be? It's okay. Bring it up. Nicole, how are you doing down there?
I mean, if we want to go ahead and move forward, there's just going to be more questions because this raises.
I agree, I agree. I also agree. Kyle? Diane? Okay, fair enough. So let's go ahead and open the public hearing on Sundance Solar Major 1041 Permit, 1041-2024-1310, and Sundance Solar Special Use by Review, SUR 2024-0028. With that, Jennifer, I'm assuming you're doing the staff presentation?
Yes, sir.
So please start.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Planning Commission. I'm Jennifer Jones, the planning manager, presenting the Sundance Solar projects to you tonight. As mentioned, there's both a major 1041 permit application as well as a special use by review. So I handed out some additional materials. There are a couple of sheets that clarified a error with the parcel number that was listed on the application. The parcels that were referenced in all of the packet materials, including the maps and the exhibits, all include the same correct parcel. We were always talking about the same parcels, the number was listed wrong, it was a different parcel owned by the same property owners. So the additional paperwork to clarify that has been provided, a letter from the applicant, an updated lease agreement with the property owner, and the updated taxes from the property owner as well, and the legal descriptions were always correct. So those additional materials were handed out. In addition, some additional public comments that have been received since the packet went out. Those were two separate letters in support of this project, and so I passed those out since they were not able to be included in the packet with the other public comment. With that, we will go ahead and get started. As mentioned, I'll be making a single presentation for both of these applications. The land use portion of it is quite similar. We will certainly distinguish between the approval criteria. We have many slides on that for you, as well as obviously the separate staff reports, full, full packet materials of the separate applications. But we're talking about the same request and same property essentially. So the subject property is at the southeast corner of Kiowa Bennett Road and County Road 154. Total, we're looking at approximately 1,100 acres in total. The actual project itself would take up about 600 acres, that's the footprint for that. All of this property is zoned A agriculture. And as mentioned, the request, a major 1041 and SUR to operate a solar facility with up to 74.9 megawatts of solar energy and/or 50 megawatts of battery storage, including an onsite substation. So where are we talking? This is the entire county. The circle is the property, and we're going to zoom in, but I did want to give a little bit of context about where this is in Albert County. And we will zoom into the property. The yellow portion is your economic development zone along Kiowa Bennett Road. The subject property is outlined, and then that dark gray portion, that little square is an existing core substation that is on the south side of County Road 154, directly adjacent to the subject property and would provide a connection for this proposed solar facility. And as you can see in all of the maps, the surrounding area is entirely agriculture. This is a site photo of the site. It's an undeveloped piece of property. There is nothing on the site. And this is a photo of the existing core substation. So what are we talking about? We're talking about a solar facility to generate electricity up to essentially 75 megawatts as well as the battery storage. You will see the battery storage, I guess summarized or abbreviated as B E S S for that battery energy storage site, and so you might see that throughout the packet. This is a diagram, essentially a site plan or a diagram taken from their SUR, both essentially against, here showing the same thing. And I have a few slides to sort of point out some of the different things here on this site plan because it is a little bit hard to see at such a large site. So the blue areas are essentially where the solar panels are, the solar, the rows of solar arrays. And we do have a detail showing a little bit about how those work. The panels do adjust to follow the sun, and so at their maximum height is about 12 feet, but they are lower when they are not directly upright. There, the yellow, if you can see that, is eight-foot fencing around the subject area. And then, again, I realize this is a little bit hard to see on here. Kiowa Bennett Road is over here to the far left of the screen. The proposed site is approximately 1,000 feet east of Kiowa Bennett Road setback, and then you have about a 200-foot setback along County Road 154. And then you have the fencing, and then you have a landscape buffer, so I've wanted to show how that's laid out on the site. The existing core substation is this little notch out of the top. The adjacent is the onsite substation and the point of interconnection between the two. There is an office building, a parts building, employee parking onsite, and then I've also highlighted where the battery storage area is. Obviously, the majority of the site are the actual solar panels themselves. A little bit of background about this, this probably seems familiar to folks. This application, essentially the same, and both the 1041 and the SUR were previously approved by the Board of County Commissioners in 2018. That was through Resolution 18-9. At that time, the project was not able to move forward, they did not construct anything, and so those approvals have lapsed since 2018. So that is why they are back with a new application before you tonight. A timeline of the project, because this is a 1041, the timeline does become really important, so I wanted to highlight some of these particular dates. The determination of the 1041 level, you've heard tonight, this is a major 1041, was made in July of 2024. The pre-application meeting also in July. And then the determination of a major 1041 was published in July as required by both Albert County 1041 Regulations and state statute. Community meetings for this project were held in September and October of 2024. The formal application was submitted in December of 2024. There were two completeness review cycles, again, as required per the 1041 Regulations. Those were completed in January and February of 2025. And then the referral was sent out, the project sent out for review by outside departments and agencies in March of 2025, March 3rd. So getting to the specifics, those community meetings mentioned, one was held at the end of September. There were approximately 20 or so folks at that meeting. And then a second meeting in order to confirm noticing was held in October, and that one had about 12 residents. And the types of questions, concerns that were discussed at those meetings, an obvious question is, why was it not built in 2018? There were questions about any environmental impact or potential impact to the wildlife in the area. Also, how was the power going to be distributed and where would that go? There were questions about the solar panels themselves, how they're constructed, what they're constructed of, questions about the fencing, discussion of any potential nuisance, noise, light, or dust. And then finally, there were conversations about fire safety and any potential visual impact. So those were the items that were discussed as part of the community meetings. So it brings us to the actual review of the materials. The agencies listed did specifically receive this application, both of them, the 1041 and the SUR, and had no objections or concerns. These include Black Hills Energy, the Building Department, the Treasurer, Lumen or Century Link, as they're known. The Sheriff's Office did review and had no concerns or comments. I spoke directly to our Office of Emergency Management. They commented that they had no concerns to note, no concerns or comments to provide, and also no comments, I'm sorry, no objections from the Kiowa Conservation District. So the departments and agencies who did provide comments back included those listed here, and I will go through each of them. The State Department of Water Resources, Colorado Parks and Wildlife, Core Electric, the Assessors Office, Planning Staff, Public Health, Public Works, and Kiowa Fire. I did want to note on Public Works that really the outstanding issue with Public Works is addressed as a condition of approval. It's finalizing a road use agreement and/or development agreement. Those have already been in place, they have already been handled, they're, this needs to be finalized through legal at this time. So it is a recommended condition of approval. Getting a little bit ahead there. So specific comments, and these are all included in the packet, specific comments from the Department of Water Resources, really talked about the wells onsite. This particular project is not utilizing any of the wells onsite, so they won't be requesting approval to use those in this capacity. Colorado Parks and Wildlife provided a letter, both with their initial application and as a part of this review, that they have coordinated with the applicant for appropriate site design and that they appreciated the applicant's cooperation. Core did provide comments, essentially that they would be maintaining the easements around their substation and that there were some particular clearances that had to be met around the poles, it's about 37 feet. So just noting those. The Assessors Office noted some changes or an additional address would be needed. And then Public Health did provide two sets of comments, those are included in your packet. Essentially, they required that the applicant install septic onsite, and the applicant has agreed to do that, and that's now included in their plans. And then, as with everything, any required permits will be obtained. Back to Public Works, I mentioned this one a little bit, but the road use agreement But the road use agreement and/or development agreement, those are being finalized. Those are already essentially done, but waiting for a finalization from the legal department. And those are handled through a recommended condition of approval, which is fairly typical that at this stage, those are not quite done, but almost done. And then Kiowa Fire, I did reach out to the Fire Chief and confirmed that they had no comments. They have been working closely with the applicant. They did provide, as their comment, the standard solar requirements. And those are included in your packet as well. So I wanted to show a few of the photo renderings that were included in the packet because really that's, I think that's, that's what everybody wants to know. What is this going to look like? What is the impact? How is it going to work? And so the applicants provided 11 different renderings from different vantage points. I was highlighting three from the corners for this presentation tonight. So the first will be from essentially the southwest corner of the project. And then we have the northwest corner of the project and then the far northeast. And so again, all 11 are included in your packet for review, but to highlight three of those. And the green is showing the fencing. It's hard to see in this photo and this rendering. It's not very visible. Green is the fencing and this illustration shows from that northwest corner. And then from that far east corner, kind of what that site would look like. One of the, I'm sorry, approval criteria, I couldn't get the word, refers to adopted plans, master plans. And so the goals and policies from the comprehensive plan that are applicable to a project like this were included in the staff report and highlighted here. They talk about projects being respectful to the environment, encouraging energy conservation, and renewable energy resources. Public comments so far. Three emails were included in your packet. Those were sent to the Board of County Commissioners. The Board of County Commissioners then sent them down to us. And I haven't included those in your packet. Those were in opposition of the project. Two additional emails have come in that were in support of the project. I did provide paper copies of those as mentioned. One of those is from the Rocky Mountain Farmers Union. I believe I have that correct. And another from the Elizabeth Chamber. So you do have those for review. And the approval criteria, these are summarized on the screen in order to be brief. Obviously, the full text is available in the staff report in the packet. I won't try to read all of that to you all to waste anyone's time. The approval criteria, we'll start with the 1041. These are specifically from Article 17, Letter M. A, all necessary property rights right of way, easements and permits will be obtained. That the project protects water quality and supply. That there's not a significant risk from natural hazards. General conformity with the master plans, as mentioned. That there's not an adverse impact on local services or delivery of those services. Principles of sustainability or resource conservation, energy efficiency, and recycling or reuse. Impact to the environment. There's specifically an approval criteria about high priority habitat that is addressed through the Colorado Parks and Wildlife. That it will not cause a nuisance, that it won't degrade any particular archaeological, important areas, and that it's necessary to meet the development and population demands. Also, that it will not result in an unreasonable risk of release of hazardous materials. The next set of appropriate or applicable approval criteria are from Article 17, M2. And they talk about financial, whether or not this would be a financial burden on the county, that the applicant is technically and financially capable, that the applicant has the expertise, and again, the financial capability to develop and operate such a project. Whether there would be an impact to a specific sector of the local economy, an impact to recreational opportunities. Do the benefits outweigh the losses? And that this is a suitable solution based on the need, the location, technology, et cetera. And the final set of 1041 approval criteria that's applicable, that the project preserves desirable patterns of traffic, landscape, commerce, et cetera. It avoids conflicts with state or local plans. So that was the conclusion of the summary of the very many approval criteria for the 1041. Moving to the S U R, the approval criteria, again, summarized. Is the project compatible with the surrounding area? Will it burden infrastructure? Will it cause an increase in traffic congestion or the road system? Will it create air odor, water, noise, or light pollution? And the sanitation requirements will be met? Is the project landscaped, buffered? That it won't be detrimental to Albert County and any supplemental standards. And for the record, there are no additional supplemental standards for a solar project. With that, staff does recommend that the Planning Commission make a recommendation of approval with conditions for the 1041. And there are a number of conditions. A few of them are your standard conditions, taking the public hearing signs down, that it's not effective until all fees are paid and the resolution is recorded. For the 1041, it's recommended a condition of approval that we note that the special use by review application also has to be approved and recorded. Recordation of all the appropriate documents. And five, that the applicant will file with the county a financial security, such as a bond or irrevocable letter of credit deemed adequate for the entire duration of the lifespan of the facility. That is a requirement that is outlined in Article 17 for a 1041. Moving to the S U R, staff recommends that the Planning Commission does make a recommendation, again, of approval with conditions for the S U R. The S U R specifically, again, taking down the public hearing signs. Everything must be recorded and recorded at the appropriate timeframe to become effective. The corresponding 1041 application must be approved by the Board of County Commissioners. As noted, that the required road use agreement or development agreement must be fully executed and recorded. And finally, that the applicant shall make a payment to Albert County in the amount of 2% of the total cost of construction within six months of board approval or before new work takes place on the site. And that is specifically required in the fee schedule. That was a high-level overview. If the Planning Commission would allow, I would request that the applicant be allowed to make their presentation next. And then both the applicant and staff would be available to answer any questions.
Pretty sure that's the way we usually do it. So if the applicant would like to stand and make a presentation, we'd be happy to hear you.
Push the big button. Is that what you said? Okay. Yes, sir. Technology's not really my best thing here.
Did you really just say technology's not something?
Believe it or not, it's actually not.
So you're putting in solar arrays?
I'm talking about computers.
And you're, okay.
I'm talking about computers and cell phones. I'm pressing the button. It's not doing anything. Still light blue, pink, or light, almost white blinking? I think it's plugged in.
Sometimes down here. Yep.
Blinking.
I can display it if we have to.
Okay.
I know this one if you all.
Try this one, just in case.
It should pop up. There you go.
Oh, there we go. Click this.
Yeah.
I saw it pop up.
Yeah, it popped up.
Do you want me to just forward it to you?
Not everyone has a puff like we do.
I've never used one of these. Do you want me to just forward it to you?
If that's easier.
Or if you want, you can just, yeah, that's probably the easiest way. Sorry, everybody.
Hey, Wendy, you want to turn the recorder off for just a minute? We're going to take a five-minute recess, if you don't mind. I don't know if they fixed the men's upstairs, but the, there is a men's open downstairs if you're.
In the ladies.
Hey, Wendy, you want to turn the recorder off for just a minute? We're going to take a five-minute recess, if you don't mind. I don't know if they fixed the men's upstairs, but the... There is a men's open downstairs, if you're...
And the ladies.
Thank you. Hey, Wendy, you want to turn the recorder off for just a minute? We're going to take a five-minute recess, if you don't mind. I don't know if they fixed the men's upstairs, but the... There is a men's open downstairs, if you're...
And the ladies.
So, Cypress Creek as a whole, our values. We have five core values: care, courage, creativity, conviction, and collaboration. You'll see that top right, it's kind of hard to read from back here even, but we do have three different business divisions. So, we have development, which obviously I sit in, kind of taking a project from nothing to something, going through the environmental, the engineering process, and things of that nature. Then we have our O and M division, which is our operations and maintenance folks, actually on-site, doing things like panel washing, vegetation maintenance, etc. And then we do have our operational fleet, obviously, projects that are currently serving local grids today. We were founded in 2014, so just over ten and a half, eleven years of experience, about four hundred-ish employees. We are owned by a private equity firm, EQT Infrastructure. And we do, you know, take all five of these very seriously with every single project that we, you know, sign up, own, and operate. A little bit more on Cypress Creek, development experience. So, we do have just over twelve gigawatts of solar projects developed to date, pretty much all across the United States. We do have transmission-scale and community-scale projects. Really, the main difference there is that the blue stars you see on that map are called community-scale projects. Those are around the fifteen to twenty megawatt size or less. And we do have the green stars, which are showcasing our larger projects. They're called utility-scale or transmission-scale projects, similar in size to Sundance Solar. And actually, in fact, usually our base case is a little bit larger than Sundance Solar, so that's kind of what those green ones represent. About eight hundred and fifty projects in twenty-two states, as mentioned, just over ten years of experience. And we are a full-blown developer, and owning and operating is our goal. Here's just a quick slide on a couple of examples of just kind of what projects, you know, look like that we have developed in the past and now own and operate. Obviously, bottom left does contain batteries. I would say for Sundance specifically, you know, like the landscape might look the most out of these five, probably most near to the bottom right. But that's the biggest project on this slide, so it's definitely not comparable in size. That project's about four times, three times the size of Sundance, so not for reference on the sizing point, but just on the geographic point. So, I'd like to get into environmental mitigation. So, Cypress Creek does intentionally cite projects. I mean, there are a lot of companies out there that have their own business models, but Cypress Creek, we are intentionally citing projects that we truly think could not only be built, but actually power local communities. You know, we're not signing up projects trying to flip them and make money. We are truly trying to power the grid in a cost-effective manner. And so, what comes with that is really having an intentional citing practice, making sure that projects are not just signed up just for the heck of it, but that they truly have a long-term goal and benefits. So, we do extensively survey the project area and construct strict due diligence efforts for biological resources, well-in delineation, environmental impacts, cultural sites, and other constraints. We take a conservative approach as well with resources and working to implement agency recommendations into our projects. So, for this project in specific, as Jennifer mentioned in kind of the pre-presentation, CPW was a large one on this project. We got a couple of comments back from them that I will go through, and we went not only to the extent to adhere and acknowledge those, but, you know, above and beyond. Minimize project disturbance areas, implementing avoidance buffers and timing limitations where necessary. We do work cooperatively with the county to ensure impacts to county resources are minimal. This county in specific, a major shout-out, has been very communicative and collaborative throughout this entire process, and so I thank folks enough. We do provide the utmost respect to conservation of wildlife and nature throughout the development process as well. And this picture on the right is actually a current standing picture of the site today, just taken a couple of weeks ago. I think just a couple more general slides here, but I wanted to spend a second just talking about solar and storage growth. I know folks may, you know, know this, but I just want to point it out here specifically in the state of Colorado. So, really, the main gist of the slide is just to talk about that solar is a cost-effective solution. It's really meant to promote grid reliability. It's meant to promote grid resiliency. It's meant to diversify the energy mix and make sure that, you know, everybody has a stable power source. So, that map on the bottom showcases just Colorado specifically. You'll see it's from, well, probably can't see it because no one can read that far, but it's from 2001 to today. It kind of just showcases how much more the energy mix has been diversified in the past, you know, two and a half decades. It's really all centered around diversifying and providing a reliable, resilient grid, and that's what our project's here to do today. So, I want to talk about solar in general real quick, just a couple of points I wanted to point out. And we can, and then we'll get into batteries right after this. So, solar is contributing to a more diversified energy mix, as just stated, making the grid more resilient. Solar is powering the grid in a cost-effective manner. Solar is able to be combined with energy storage systems, BESS as abbreviated, to provide a more reliable and stable power supply even during low periods of sunlight. So, for example, Sundance Solar does have a battery attached for that peak demand period and low periods of sunlight. Solar is quiet and self-sufficient, requires low maintenance and minimal water usage. So, for this project, we are trucking in water for construction, and then during operations, it's very self-sufficient, not expecting panel washing. It says panel washing once every three years, it's more probably the latter of that, about every three years. So, very self-sufficient during operations and during construction will be trucked in. Solar is primarily made up of glass, aluminum, plastic polymers, and silicone. So, and then kind of going into the next point, solar is designed to absorb sunlight, not to reflect or emit. So, the purpose of a solar panel is to absorb sunlight and, you know, can be released to the grid, goes through inverters, and then goes through core system for this project, for example. It is not meant to reflect, it is not meant to emit. We do have studies from other sites that I'd love to share with folks on, you know, glare and things of that nature, and it's always a very, very good result on our end. So, EMFs for the site, electromagnetic fields are comparable to everyday electrical appliances such as shavers and hair dryers. Studies do show that solar EMFs, electromagnetic fields, are safe and too weak to cause harm to human health in any way. I will also mention that this project is cited very specific, it's very intentionally cited, it's very remote, and so there was, there's no, there is no impacts to the local folks. Solar is able to generate electricity in any climate. I think that was important to note, just because obviously, sitting here in Colorado, there is four seasons here. I wanted to point out that modern panels are tested to withstand hail around one inch in diameter at about fifty miles an hour. I know that's important to folks, I've gotten that question in the community, and so I really wanted to point out that the panels will be tested for that. Solar is minimally impactful to the environment, we'll get into the CPW recommendations and how we took those into account. Solar is a source of significant economic stimulus, local economic stimulus. I have a whole separate slide or two on that coming up as well, but these projects truly do, you know, provide a lot of local economic benefits to the local county here, and we'll go, we'll talk about what that means for the county. And the last point, solar is domestic energy. So, solar is obviously, you know, the sun is shining around three hundred days a year here in Colorado, in Elbert County specifically. Solar is domestic energy, it's coming straight from the sun shining here in Elbert County, and that is our main power source. So, that's solar, I'd like to hop into batteries, and then we'll get into the project. So, battery energy storage safety, so just first and foremost, we do have an emergency response plan in coordination, and that has been approved by a Kiowa Fire Department. Also, our battery manufacturer for this project is Hytheum, that's our manufacturer, and they actually have their own site-specific emergency response plan and battery fire protection system as well. Both of those documents have been included in our Kiowa Solar Department checklist, or solar requirement checklist as well, and they were also approved by Chief Lemansky. The Hytheum batteries are in concurrence with current NFPA 855 code, so that is essentially just the most up-to-date battery, national battery code. Here at Cypress Creek, we use the most recent technology and state-of-the-art battery fire suppression systems. So, I wanted to point out, and then obviously, this picture on the right is not indicative of our project, but that is the exact same batteries we'll be using. So, each one of those is called a container. Our batteries for this site and all of our sites of everything that you saw on the map earlier is called container-based batteries. Really, what that means is each one of these in this depiction acts as its separate container, and they each have their own cooling system inside of them. Whereas, you know, you know, the opposite of that is called building-based, which is essentially a bunch of batteries inside one building that has one cooling system. So, if one catches on fire, whatever happens, it happens to them all. Ours are pretty much individual structures, each with their own cooling system. All Hytheum batteries are also tested for propagation, essentially what that is, is the spread of a thermal runway, which, as blatantly as you can put that, is how quickly and easily a battery fire can be started. Results are extremely negative, and that's also tested for large-scale burn testing before they're ever delivered to our site. So, they will not be delivered to site until all those tests come back with negative results. And then once at site, the last point, we will have yearly first responder trainings as well. I've been in very close communication with Elizabeth and Kiowa Fire Department, as well as Rattlesnake, have gotten our solar requirement checklist approved, and we do have plans implemented as well for first responder trainings every year. If the technology changes on the solar or the batteries at any point, we could have them more than that, you know, if ten years down the line, something needs to be updated or whatever, it could be twice a year, but right now, we are committing to yearly trainings. As mentioned, Kiowa Fire Solar Requirements Checklist was submitted just about two weeks ago and approved as well. Anything that was in that requirement checklist that was not already taken into account on our permit application that you were able to read through has been acknowledged and implemented into our site plan, as well as our EPC, Engineering Procurement and Construction Scope. And then the quote on the right is essentially from Electric Power Research Institution. It's just essentially, to sum it up, talking about fire suppression system requirements, first responder trainings, the most recent technology. It's a full-blown article talking about how battery fires, large-scale battery fires have decreased by ninety-seven percent in the past five years. Okay, now we're getting to the project, Elbert County specific, I know that's kind of a lot on the general side of things. So, Elbert County community involvement, I kind of want to start off with this, and honestly, I will not read through this entire slide. What I want to do is actually stop for a second and thank the community. This is, this is not normal, I will say, for a lot of projects. We've had a lot of really good feedback from the community throughout our community meeting process. I've personally, and Lauren, who's obviously can't be here today, she's at a conference, but us two in specific have been out to this community several times in the past couple of months. And even before that, this project has been technically managed by myself for three years, and so I have been coming quite often. I've had coffee with folks, lunch with folks, and really appreciate everybody's feedback. And there's even some folks that were just wanting to educate themselves as well, so I really do, you know, take time to appreciate everybody's feedback. We are committed to being a long-term good neighbor as well for this project. It's supposed to be a long-term partnership, this is not meant to be, you know, a couple of donations and investments, and then we get approved and we never see you guys again. That's something I truly value as a person, I truly value at Cypress Creek. I've been at other shops where that may not always be the case, and Cypress Creek really, really, really is good at that. Our C-suite and our executives have an actual mission statement that is derived around being a long-term partner, and I've never seen anybody in the industry do better than us. We really are meant to be, this is supposed to be Cypress Creek, Elbert County, all working together, you know, reaping benefits, X, Y, and Z, and so it's, tons of initiatives have been kicked off already, nearly fifty thousand dollars in donations to date. I will point out that a lot of these are governed through conversation. first responder trainings, the most recent technology. It's a full-blown article talking about how battery fires, large-scale battery fires have decreased by 97% in the past five years. Okay, now we're getting to the project, Elbert County specific. I know that was kind of a lot on the general side of things. So Elbert County community involvement, I kind of want to start off with this. And honestly, I will not read through this entire slide. What I want to do is actually stop for a second and thank the community. This is, this is not normal, I will say, for a lot of projects. We've had a lot of really good feedback from the community throughout our community meeting process. I personally and Lauren, who's obviously can't be here today, she's at a conference, but us two in specific have been out to this community several times in the past couple of months. And even before that, this project has been technically managed by myself for three years. And so I have been coming quite often. I've had coffee with folks, lunch with folks, and really appreciate everybody's feedback. And there's even some folks that were just wanting to educate themselves as well. So I really do, you know, take time to appreciate everybody's feedback. We are committed to being a long-term good neighbor as well for this project. It's supposed to be a long-term partnership. This is not meant to be, you know, a couple of donations and investments, and then we get approved, and we never see you guys again. That's something I truly value as a person, I truly value at Cypress Creek. I've been at other shops where that may not always be the case, and Cypress Creek really, really, really is good at that. Our C-suite and our executives have a actual mission statement that is derived around being a long-term partner. And I've never seen anybody in the industry do better than us. We really are meant to be, this is supposed to be Cypress Creek, Elbert County, all working together, you know, reaping benefits, X, Y, and Z. And so it's tons of initiatives have been kicked off already, nearly $50,000 in donations to date. I will point out that a lot of these are governed through conversations I've had with local folks on organizations that could be important or, you know, where we might see a little bit more, you know, notice for things that folks, you know, if you have kids, for example, you know, things like the 4-H Gala and stuff like that. 2025 initiatives are underway as well. That picture on the bottom left is myself back in 2023 at Big Simla High School. I presented two scholarships there on behalf of our Energizing Tomorrow's Leader Scholarship Program. I also did that again in 2024 summer. It was at Elizabeth High School last summer. And then actually this year, I'll be back in a couple of weeks, and we do have two more scholarship students that I'll be presenting to as well. Top right picture, myself and Chief Lemansky over at Kiowa Fire District. We have been really in great communication with him on the emergency response plan, the checklist. We were able to help donate towards a new sign for the Kiowa Fire District. Chief Lemansky made a really good point that that's the last stop when you're going out of the town. And so community messaging is obviously super important as you're leaving the town. And so we wanted to make sure that folks were able to see that. Bottom right picture is from our first community meeting. As Jennifer mentioned earlier, first community meeting was September 25th. Then we had another one about a month later. Really, the point of the second one, although it wasn't required, we really wanted to make sure that we had given folks in the community ample amount of time to ask questions, ample amount of time to raise concerns, ample amount of time to educate themselves. And obviously, it goes past that. It's not, it doesn't have to be in the community meeting and done. We've had so many conversations with excellent people in this community after those, after those couple of hearings and really being able to work on that feedback. So a little bit on project history. As Jennifer mentioned earlier, this may be a familiar name. I was not at Cypress Creek in 2018. So I'm not sure how many folks in the room were here, but it might be a familiar name. So Sundance was approved by Elbert County Board of County Commissioners in 2018. Shortly after approval, the project was put on hold by Cypress Creek in response due to the, due to demand needed in Elbert County. That's pretty much how these project operate, how these projects operate. It's really supply versus demand. So at the time, it just wasn't truly at that point ready yet. For about four years in between there, we were really, Cypress Creek was evaluating options on how to progress this project. And then 2024 Cypress Creek and Core revamped conversations pretty quickly due to the increasing demand that Core's territory is facing right here in Elbert County. And then in December of 2024, Cypress Creek and Core entered into a power purchase agreement, which we call PPA, for the Sundance Solar and Storage Project. Quick slide on Core. I know folks in the community know who Core is, given it's your local power provider, but I just want to point out a couple of quick things here. So as just mentioned on the previous slide, this, this project is really due to increased demand in Elbert County. There is a need for power in this community and Core's territory, especially in the 27 to 2031 timeframe. It is, it is a need for the, for power. Second point, obviously bolded, underlining about as important as it can get. This is not a part of the Colorado Power Pathway that Excel is procuring. Very separate, completely separate. The purpose of this project is to be local benefits, powering the local community, staying in Core's territory. There is, there is no, no part of it that is associated with Excel. So I wanted to make that very apparent to folks. This is a local project serving the local Core customers. It does promote flexibility and resiliency to the grid, and then it is part of an overall portfolio to incorporate all sources of power. Okay, we'll get into the specs here. So Cypress Creek, Sundance Solar. The project is 75 megawatts, 74.9 to be exact, of solar, about a 50-megawatt battery by four hours. It's still 50 megawatts, it's just the duration. Located right here in Elbert County, Colorado, interconnection utility, Core, offtake is obviously with Core as well. And then the timeline, so we're very, we're very close to dev complete, pretty much wrapping up all development items. This project has been, you know, as mentioned, signed up in 2017. So studies and everything has been done, redone, updated every, every so often. And so there is not much left on the development side besides our permitting scope. FNTP, which stands for Financial Notice to Proceed. Essentially what that means is when construction is expected to start, at least right around there, which is Q3 2025 this year, so coming up fairly quickly. COD, Commercial Operation Date, is Q4 of next year. Project description, I know it's kind of tough to see, but I thought Jennifer's maps were excellent as well. We are located about three and a half miles north directly of Kiowa, Colorado, on the corner of County, County Road 154 and Kiowa Bennett. The pins that are correct are shown there. Current use is agricultural lands, undeveloped lands, rural residential development. And as mentioned, there is an existing Core substation within the project boundary. I wanted to throw that on there. That's, that's very important. It's not easy to find sites like that. Very optimal when your substation or your interconnection, point of interconnection is on site. So the proposed uses for solar panels, site access, electrical infrastructure, battery storage, and O and M building area that Jennifer described, and also the spare parts building as Jennifer described. We are utilizing approximately 603 acres of our 1119 that we have under firm lease site control with our private landowner. Specs for the project, I think, I think Jennifer mentioned 12 feet. It depends on the panels used, but it will, it would be a maximum of 15 foot when fully tilted at 60 degrees, which is only at the peak. So that's during peak daylight hours, you know, right around lunchtime when it's, the sun's right on top of us, is the only time you'll see that it's peak. And then the rest of the time, they do track with the sun, north, south. The battery structure will be a maximum of 10 feet tall. Previously mentioned, the entire site will be surrounded by eight-foot-high agricultural mesh security fencing per CPW request. There will be no barbed wire on this project. I want to make that very firm statement. I've had folks in the community ask about looking at other projects that are around. We really at Cypress Creek don't advise folks to go look at other sites. Our sites are very different. We go above and beyond with mitigation measures. We don't use any type of the same, we don't use any kind of the same fencing as other developers. Our batteries could be different, all sorts of things. So I mean, it might give you a general layout of just what they look like from a panel perspective, but our projects are much more advanced. And then to the right, obviously, is another photo simulation from Vantage Point 11, which is the most east, southeast part of the project. Minimal lighting will be required for the project specifically around the battery structure and the O and M building. All lights will be downward facing, not expecting any light pollution on the site at all and in accordance with the Illuminating Engineering Society Handbook. Very minimal. A little bit left on the specs here. As talked about site control, we do have a strong partnership with our landowner since 2017, signing up this project. It is privately owned land, and this is what this landowner has chosen to do with it. So we are expecting to use 603 acres for the 74.9-megawatt project. That's our most up-to-date site plan, could, could give or take a couple acres once we get finalized. But I will make sure to communicate that, but that is what we're planning on for right this second. On the interconnection side, we do have interconnection studies complete. Large generation interconnection agreement has also been agreed, agreed upon with Core and updated very recently in 2024. Core utility upgrades are actually underway already for the project. We do have Ulta and Toppo surveys complete, things like geotechnical, pilot testing, drainage report, hydro and hydraulic assessments are all complete and updated as part of this refreshed permitting scope zoning. Obviously, we're here today for it, but the application was submitted on January 30th, 2025. We are anticipating approval, you know, end of Q2 for the 1041 S U R. Mineral outreach, we do have a full mineral port conducted by our external mineral experts. Came back with, I believe, 10 or 12 total mineral owners. All mineral owners have been, surface waiver or accommodation agreements have been signed. So we do have full mineral coverage out of the 10 or 12 mineral owners, full mineral coverage on the site. Field surveys, the entire 1041 and S U R permit checklist was complete for Elbert County standards. CPW correspondence implemented into the site plan. We have a recently updated Phase One just from about a week ago as well, Phase One Environmental Site Assessment. Wetland delineation is complete, design constraints complete. We did receive a no permit required letter from the US Army Corps of Engineers. Taxes, I won't spend much time on here. I have a whole separate slide for it, but we do have a tax memo and model completed by Ernst &amp; Young. And that, that we'll, we'll get into later. It was about a month ago for property taxes and estimated cumulative county tax revenue. Procurement and construction, which we call EPC, Engineering Procurement and Construction. That contract is with McCarthy. And they're, you know, our main source of construction, and they will be starting construction Q3 2025. Agency coordination, won't spend a whole ton on this slide since Jennifer went through it on hers, but Elbert County Public Health, Public Works, Economic Development. I've mentioned CPW several times. United States Fish and Wildlife, Army Corps of Engineers, both Kiowa and Elizabeth Fire Departments have reviewed everything that we've presented here today. Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, Water Control, Water Quality Control Division, and then actually the State of Division of Water Resources as well. Again, won't go through this whole slide. This is, this is most of the studies that we completed. There's actually a couple we left off, but, you know, very detailed site plan. We have spent a lot of time on this project, you know, very, very risk mitigated. And so I wanted to bold just a couple, a couple surveys or studies that we've completed that I've gotten questions on in the past. So we do have an updated traffic analysis, Habitat and Wildlife Survey Report, a vegetation management plan, dust control plan, drainage report, and then a decommissioning plan and estimate, and we'll talk about those. Not yet. It's okay. Here's a site map as Jennifer showed as well. So I wanted to just talk about a couple of things. I know that's hard to see, and I can forward this to anybody so they can see it up close. But CPW had four different things that there, or four different recommendations that they wanted to implement on the site before approving. So the first one was sliding animal, or sliding gates for animal egress. I know it's impossible to see, but I will share the site plan with folks afterwards. And there is, I believe there's three total sliding gates that we did implement. The reason for that was they wanted to, if any type of wildlife was ever, you know, trapped inside the site or inside the fencing, they thought it would be the most optimal to have sliding gates to get them out of there. So we were able to adhere to that. They also asked for game cameras to be installed on site, although not the normal for Cypress Creek projects at all. We were able to commit to that as well. Some of those little white boxes do indicate where those will be. So that's just even more surveillance of the project. They also asked us to implement a wildlife corridor for animal crossing. This was, this was the largest effect to the site plan out of, out of, out of all of them. I do understand that the Kiowa Creek is just to the west of the project, right across Kiowa Bennett, Kiowa Bennett Road. And so if you look at the, you know, the backwards seven or the backwards L shape, that, that kind of larger opening on the, on the southern side of the project is exactly that. Very large opening for, it's a wildlife corridor for, you know, pronghorn or whatever's going across to still get to Kiowa Creek. We've actually seen a lot of benefits with that as well. You know, folks are somewhat concerned about, you know, pronghorn maybe crossing over Kiowa Creek. This actually at least has them all in a very centralized location. And so the CPW really recommended that we do that as well. Another thing was rounded fences inside the project. So if you kind of look inside the backwards seven again, everything inside the backwards, the upside-down L shape is a rounded fence. That was another thing that CPW recommended for the pronghorn. They felt originally it was actually a 90-degree angle, kind of at that seven, seven, 90-degree angle at the top. And they mentioned that pronghorn would likely follow along the rounded fence line and make their way into that opening, that wildlife corridor, rather than getting trapped in the corners. And so they recommended all four of those things. We were able to do all those things, and they are implemented into our site plan and full-blown engineering and construction schedule. Another thing, coordination with Core directly. We had our batteries a little bit more on the southern end of, or southern side of the substation on the project. All we did was just move those to the east side. That's essentially just for cost effectiveness and optimization. And then, as mentioned previously as well, 200-foot setbacks from the property lines and County Road 154. Previously, that was 150. We just updated that not too long ago from 150 to 200 foot. We did get some feedback at some of our community meetings that that would be beneficial for folks. And so we were able to make sure that happened. Construction operations. So as mentioned, McCarthy is a trusted and well-sourced EPC. Again, that stands for Engineering Procurement and Construction. And they do have extensive construction experience across the United States, including a ton of Colorado, Colorado projects that are currently operating. So they have built 660 megawatts built in Colorado. 107,000 total Colorado homes are powered annually by McCarthy Projects. They have also created over 8,000 total construction jobs in Colorado specifically. And then they have actually invested, they kind of have their own community investments as well, and they have invested over $306 million invested in the state of Colorado as part of construction. Portable toilets will be used during construction, septic during operations. I've had great communication over it with Marissa at the Elbert County Public Health Department. And we did get approved for septic to be used during operations. Obviously, a big difference between construction and operations, like the amount of people. So septic only used for operations, portable toilets for constructions. We will also have 24/7/365 surveillance from our Cypress Creek headquarters in Durne, Carolina. I wanted to point that out, you know, between our full-time O and M staff on site, up to four permanent jobs, our 24/7 surveillance from our headquarters and the game cameras installed by CPW, we will have very close supervision on this project at all times. Sundance Solar and Battery Project is expected to be about 12 to 15 months of construction, as mentioned, so we're scheduled to begin Q3 of this year, completed Q4 next year. Once operational, the project is largely self-sufficient. And then as just discussed, O and M staff will be on site doing things like vegetation management, panel washing every three years. Really, their main goal is to make sure that the project is operating in a safe manner and operating in a manner that is, you know, if it's a 75-megawatt project, that it's actually putting out what it's supposed to be putting out. The hauling route, see the picture on the right, pretty much coming directly straight north up Kiowa Bennett, from the town of Kiowa into the site and turning right on 154. We do have a Sundance traffic analysis specific to our project. That was updated just a couple of weeks, or just a couple of months ago in Q4 2024. Road impacts are not expected to occur for this project. Peak, peak traffic will be during construction. So that 12 to 15 months is really when you'll see anything, if at all, during operations. As mentioned, very self-sufficient, one trip per month per less. Not expected to be, you know, anything at all during, during operations. So it's a very self-sufficient project. I want to point that out to folks. Decommissioning, I've gotten some comments about this, and so I wanted to just quickly, quickly talk about it here. So per Elbert County standards, Cypress Creek and Sunday and Solar have completed a decommissioning cost estimate for the project. The estimated decommissioning bond will be updated every five years to follow Elbert County requirements. We've also, I've also chosen to broke those out, broken those, break those out between solar and battery. I think that's important, just in case one decommissioned before the other. Having those separate, I think is important. So about $2.7-ish million currently standing in our decommissioning bond. And storage side is about $715,000 today, and that will again be updated every five years. Cypress Creek is solely liable to remove all project materials after the project is complete. So that's not on the county, it's not on the private landowner, it's not on the community. That is on Cypress Creek only to remove everything. The goal that comes with that is returning the land to previous agricultural use after project completion. Or whatever the landlord decides to do with it, I should say. Economic benefits. So the chart on the right showcases the estimated cumulative county revenue over the next 40 years for this project with approval, obviously. So the current use, the agricultural land, undeveloped land that is sitting out there now is estimated to have about a total generation of revenue of about $16,300 over the next 40 years. By the proposed solar project use, that $16,000 goes to about $9.8 million over the next 40 years. We will talk about what that goes into and kind of what buckets it's divided and conquered into. But we do have a economic and fiscal contribution analysis as well. We call that a socioeconomic analysis, and that has been completed by a third-party economic expert. We do actually have a breakdown of the B V E M in there as well, Required by State of Colorado. The Best Value Employment Metrics are all listed in there as well. And so that is in our application. A little bit more on economic benefits. These are directly attributable to Sundance Solar and Storage. So I will actually start on the far right, because it does talk about what I was just speaking of, you know, where the 9.8 million is going. We've, we've mentioned that number to folks, and folks really wanted to split it out. And so we got with a external tax consultant that knows all the details of the mill levy rates and et cetera, and could, could estimate where it's going to go. So out of the 9.8 million, I just wanted to highlight a couple. 37% will be going to Kiowa school districts, 37% of the 9.8 million. 15% to the Kiowa Fire District of the 9.8 million. 15% of the 9.8 million to Road and Bridge. 5% to Elbert County Library, plus many more. I do have that split out. If anybody cares to see that, I can forward it along at any time. And it does show each one of those buckets, what the next 40 years looks like for current agricultural use versus the next 40 years, each one of those buckets for, for total. So for example, like the Kiowa Fire Department was somewhere around like 1.5 million over the next 40 years, if it's remaining as agricultural use, it was somewhere around $3,000. And we know, we definitely have had great communication with them on how that could be beneficial. Jobs, Sundance Solar is estimated to create about 150 to 250 full-time construction jobs, as well as up to four high-paying operations and maintenance jobs as well. I want to point out, you know, obviously, the full-time operations jobs are obviously high-paying and permanent. But even, even those 150 to 250 construction jobs are really in a sense permanent as well, right? I mean, once you're, you know, our EPC will be contracting and doing, you know, hiring their own folks for the site, and there will be plenty of folks that may not have experience building solar projects. And once you build one, they, they could transfer to other projects, whether in Colorado, Albert County, or in other states. And so it really just becomes a long-term, a long-term investment for folks. Also, you know, during construction, and I'll let some other folks talk about this too. But, you know, during that 12 to 15 months, these construction workers are using Albert County restaurants, Albert County, you know, bars and restaurant, or grocery stores and gas and everything is Albert County. So even, even during the 12 to 15 months, it's not like there's no economic generation either. There's a whole separate thing going on there with the construction folks. Homes powered. Project that's about this size, 75 megawatts with the 55, with the 50-megawatt battery is expected to power about 15,000 homes in total. And then last slide, I know, I know I want to open it up for questions and I'm sure I'm boring folks. But I do want to just remind folks, this is a slide just talking about revisions and updates that we've gotten since our agency comments throughout our application process. So 1041 S U R application, 1041 and S U R application was submitted on, on January 30th, 2025. We were deemed just about 28 days later, right on the mark. Agency comments that we have received since that time. And I wanted to just talk about these. This is a full list of the breakdown of the comments that we have received. So Division of Water Resources wanted to talk about, you know, where we're getting the water. You know, we are currently showcasing in our, in our application and in our current EPC scope, all water will be trucked in for construction. We looked at going the existing wells on-site route. But we did find out through the Division of Water Resources that those wells were not permitted or suitable for temporary construction use. So we are returning back to our original scope of trucking and water for the project. Portable toilets will be used during construction again. Core planting guidelines, we were able to acknowledge those pretty quickly. Colorado Parks and Wildlife, they essentially kind of copy pasted the same comments they gave us when we did our separate review with them. And so those have already been implemented and acknowledged into our current standing site plan. Public Works. Cypress Creek confirms that the design of this project will meet Albert County construction standards and be completed by a Colorado licensed engineer. That is McCarthy, our EPC is Colorado licensed. Public Health had close coordination at the Public Health Office and we are aligned and approved that septic is only needed for operations and that portable toilets or construction will work. We have also, she also was very generous enough to give us a list of local septic engineers that have done this process before in Albert County. And so we are planning to go local with the, the septic engineers, choosing from the list that she's, she's given us in the past week. And then Jennifer mentioned as well, the road use agreement, that was completed and approved in 2018. I'm actually just waiting on a turn right now from, from, I think, from the Road and Bridge Department that I should get back very, very soon. And once that's, once that's sent over, obviously I'll have our legal team review it and then we'll get it over the line. And then the last thing I wanted to, to end on was just, all Albert County requirements have been met for this project. And actually, one more thing to, to mention as, as I end, I just can't say it enough. I really want to thank everybody here for their time today, the community as well. Been a really positive experience being able to develop in this community. So thank you so much and I will now open it for questions and discussions.
So public comment is the next piece of the puzzle. So I would like the opportunity to invite the public to come and make comments with the applicant being standing by, ready to take notes and address any concerns that are brought up. So we're going to do this by the list first, but everybody will get a chance if you haven't signed up on the list. So we're going to start with, and if I mispronounce your name, I apologize in advance. I'm going to go with Mark Jurgemeyer. And again, state your name, address, and you will have five minutes.
5496 North US Highway 85, Sedalia, Colorado. I am also the Chief Operating Officer for Core Electric Cooperative. We understood that there would be some questions about our involvement in this project. So we're here to just explain that and answer any questions you may have. Core Electric Cooperative will be the off-taker of the energy for this project. What that means is that we will not own and operate the project. However, we will be buying the energy it produces, which will then be turned over to the members of Core Electric Cooperative. As Zach mentioned, this is expected to serve about 15,000 homes. As of today, Core Electric Cooperative has 10,108 inside Albert County. So a little bit more than what the county itself needs today. In 2023, Core did submit a clean energy plan to the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment. As part of that requirement, that plan that is required by state statute, we are required to hit an 80% renewable by 2030 over a 2005 baseline. For a utility like Core that has grown significantly since 2005, that is a much harder target to meet. But with this project gets us closer to meeting that target and we do expect to meet it. In order to meet that target, we have to have a broad portfolio of wind, solar, battery, and gas generation. Again, this is one project that will fit inside that overall portfolio in our energy landscape going forward. The batteries with this project are especially important to Core as that does allow us to use that noontime sun to serve our load in the evening when it actually is at a high rate. So this project will bring clean, quiet energy to the county and, and we do support it. And I'll take any questions you may have from me.
Great. Thank you, Mark. We, we may ask you to come back up in a minute, so. Annie Rosser.
Hi, I'm Annie Rosser. So I live in Oakland, California, but I slip my time here in Littleton, Colorado. I'm the Senior Director of Engineering at Cypress Creek. And I actually grew up in Albert, in the town of Albert. I went to high school, elementary school, junior high there. My mom was a teacher there. Class of '07. When this project was originated, I was really excited because it was in my hometown. And working in the industry, I can attest to the amount of benefits that come with projects like this one. Like economic stimulus jobs, community relationships and partnerships are all things that can really make a difference here. I, I hope that that value is able to be created. I was so excited and thrilled to be able to create site plans and work, like looking at the places I kind of grew up checking out and get to go to Be No's again. That's, it was always fun as a kid, but it's kind of been a heartwarming experience and people have been really kind to me coming back. So I really appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sunny Mills.
My name is Sunny Mills.
Thank you, Sunny. Appreciate that.
My address is 27310 Forest Ridge Drive, Kiowa. Okay, so I was driving on Quincy today. I had to recycle things at the dump. There are four solar farms along the way. It seemed like the appropriate place to have a solar farm. In a place nobody really wants to live, which is east of the dump. Perfect. As I was coming home, I, I drove on Kiowa Bennett and came to County Road and dropped down, you made the turn and I dropped down and we both went, oh, we love Albert. It's so pastoral. And sure enough, on 154, there were pronghorns, a herd of them up on, on a hill. And all I can think of when I think of these solar arrays that I saw, acres and acres of them, is it was very industrial. My husband works for the US Army Corps of Engineers for over 30 years. And he was, his interest was, gee, how many easements do they have for electrical out here? I said, well, I think that's part of the power pathway. And he said, okay, and that's local. So what's the middle one? So they had 12 lines all lined up together, even before you saw the solar farms. And it was this 1,000-foot easement, probably, of line after line after line. It was the, it was ugly, industrial. Nothing pastoral, nothing beautiful, nothing, oh, I love Albert about it. People are going to lose their property values. Anyone who lives, and that, that was my husband's other comment. Oh, there's a lot of places on the 35 acres. There's a lot of homes going out here. It looks great. Wow, look at that. And then there's some that were smaller and certain ranches. So I have some stipulations that I think you should consider. First of all, I was going to say raise the solar panels because I know that deer and pronghorns can go underneath solar panels. And I looked at the pictures and I saw grass. And grass, as you know, in a prairie fire is fuel. So there was no stipulation about how they were going to take care of that. I don't, I want a stipulation about why we don't have solar systems on all new builds and why older houses don't have solar and some kind of tax refund for those who do put solar on their, on their property. I know we did and our, we got our electricity down to $35 a month instead of $200 to $400 a month. Obviously in January, we paid a little more, 125, because we really didn't earn that much. January and February, we hardly earned anything. Which means that Core will have problems during those months as well. It seems like there should be some kind of initiative for state grants to get these personal solar systems on barns and on private homes. Okay, so the eight-foot fencing, I thought for sure the pronghorn would make it through the fencing, but it's solid. And then you still see the arrays above it. Now I know solid fencing here with our high winds gets knocked over. I have friends who have solid fencing. They have to repair it every single year. I know that we have MVEA, so it doesn't help us at all. Anybody south of 86 doesn't, is not helped by this ISOR. I want a stipulation that there is safe storage of these batteries. They have to be cooled, they should be far apart. And I want the stipulation to read, how long does it take to get fire protection out to the solar farm?
Pardon me, Chair, that's five minutes.
Minutes right away. What exactly is the fire suppression system?
Sunny, if you could please continue, but hurry up.
Oh, okay. I want a stipulation about how they plan to cope with a foot of hail, which they regularly get along Kiowa Bennett Road, and how that will interfere with their process. I would like a stipulation that usually a builder of this sort pays 7%, not 2% to the county. Why isn't it more? If we're going to lose money on our property and have to put up with an industrial ISOR, we want more money. I want a stipulation that, that they're a private equity firm and how long will they hold on to this solar farm and actually have responsibility for it? So that I know that on our solar system, we only have a 20-year warranty on panels and on battery. So what exactly is this warranty?
Hate to interrupt, but how many more stipulations do you have?
Okay, that's it.
Thank you, Sunny. Appreciate it. Craig Aronad, pardon the butcher there.
My name's Craig Arcan. I'm at 282 West Fremont, Littleton, Colorado. And I'm here today to represent the McCarthy Company. We are the EPC, which is engineering, procurement, and contractor. Just wanted this company, or this board here to know that we are a very dedicated group of individuals building quality projects among many spectrums and verticals. We were established in 1864. We have 160 years of building experience. We are an ESOP, so we're all employee-owned. What that means is we take great pride in what we build. We will not build anything that we won't stand behind. And partnering with the, the gentleman over here to my right, this is one of those projects that we're, we're stepping out of our lane a little bit to support Cypress Creek on. We do a lot of utility scale. This is one of our smaller projects. But with the quality of the individuals and the thought and the process behind this, McCarthy stands firm in what we're going to deliver here today. Standing with me in the back here, I have Jimmy and James, both Colorado residents, been here for four and five decades. I personally been here for 25 years. And we've built hospitals, we've built K through eight, or K through 12. We, we build higher ed. We build communities and we stand behind those projects. And this here is one of the, you know, being in renewables, which is one division of our company, we get to do this across the whole country. So we work in many arenas, many states. We deal with a lot of municipalities. We deal with a lot of fire department concerns and issues. And I know with these projects, that is a concern. I can tell you the technology of the fire protection and these battery containers is, is improving. And this particular container has a top-notch system that will be monitored full-time through a SCADA system. With that being said, McCarthy's dedicated to Colorado. We have over 60 tradesmen here. We're, we have an office downtown. We're here to stay and we're, we're considered local. And, you know, with this project, we have 150 to 200-plus workers that are going to be coming on that site. We're talking about tradesmen. I'm a tradesman. I'm a journeyman electrician. And I started out my, my career in the field here in Colorado in 2000. And this project will have electricians, will have operators, will have mechanical, will have laborers, will have carpenters. And these are projects that we are national and we're looking to hire within the community. And when this project is complete, have a home at McCarthy to travel to Illinois, Texas, Arizona, where all these projects are being built. This is about energy security. And I think with the 9.8 million in revenue, I think that also speaks volume to the community here and giving back. With that being said, I just appreciate the opportunity to be in front of this board and considering this project. We want to create a win-win with the community, with Cypress Creek and with you all here in Albert County. Our name, McCarthy, we stand behind it, 160 years. And we'll be here all the way through the completion of this project and hopefully 40-plus years after to do a revamp or in addition to, or whatever we need to do to make it work for your community as you grow. So appreciate the time.
Thank you, Craig. Ray Marie Knowles.
A lot of people don't get that off the first try. Well, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to give us time to speak. Some of my neighbors are here. We've been working through this since this started in 2018. So we've been heavily invested. I want to start by saying I'm 39244 Kiowa Bennett Road. I apologize. I want to start by saying I'm a small business owner based right here out of Kiowa. I have, I have a national company. I work in sustainability agriculture, regenerative agriculture. So I work a lot kind of in this sphere, which has given me incredible opportunities to visit with professionals that have a little bit different experience when it comes to solar farms. And I feel like that hasn't been fully represented this evening. You know, you hear all the reasons we should have it. I wouldn't want to be in your shoes to have to weigh what the benefits are to the county to the risk that it poses to my neighbors and myself. So one of the first things that's been talked about a little bit tonight is the devaluation of property. And if you go on the first couple of pages of Google, it'll tell you that that really is pretty rare, doesn't exist. And actually, there's a really interesting study that was done by UC Berkeley. They found, now keep in mind, we're talking about UC Berkeley, you know, highly liberal, very supportive of green energy. They did a study that shows rural communities definitely have a higher devaluation of property than urban communities. Mostly, if you think about it, we move out here for aesthetics and a little bit of peace and quiet. And when we have these industrial solar farms built next to us, it's not, somebody doesn't want to come out and buy our properties right next to a solar farm. That's not what they're looking for when they move into Albert County. What their study found was on average of six different states that, it was even supported on the map that Zach shared. Some of the states that have the most solar farms. They took six of them and did an average and found that in rural communities, it's about a 5.8% all the way to a 7% decrease in property values for people who live within one-half to one mile of the solar farm. And it decreases, obviously, as you move further away into the two- and four-mile zones. There's one thing, I was a little bit concerned tonight when I was watching the presentation that it was, it was spoken multiple times that there's no, there's not really an impact to the environment. There's not, in the staff presentation, that there's not a, an issue specifically with natural disasters. not, in the staff presentation, that there's not an issue specifically with natural disasters. And this is completely false. Again, I'm not going to play semantics and try to talk about the level of whether or not, you know, the environmental impact is significant or insignificant, but I can tell you, we are in contact with the local Colorado Prairie Conservation Group, and the data they have is astounding about the impact it has to environment, even if you're trying to do some of the, excuse me, some of the things that Zach talked about as far as what they're doing. We're not talking anything about migratory birds, the bald eagles that now have come back to Kiowa Creek and fly over our place. We watched a bald eagle, just the craziest little falcon go and try to fight a bald eagle the other day from our yard, and it was, it was great. Nobody got hurt, as far as I could tell. But these are things that Elbert County citizens enjoy. And again, what we're talking about today is going to set a precedence for the rest of the county also. We're not talking about the different animals that live in the creek. They will start to exit that area. There's been studies, they don't usually stick around. The conservation group, which I think the county's going to learn more about eventually, has confirmed that a solar farm that big, that massive, is detrimental to birds that fly over it. So again, we have some concerns about that. The one thing, I have so many, I've done such a deep dive into this, I have so much information I wish that I could share with you. One of the things that I think is the most important that I really want to talk about is we want to talk about fire. And Zach did a great job talking a bit about fire, talking a bit about their fire suppression. I had three articles this morning sent to me when I woke up about three locations that had battery storage fires today. Those residents were put under, they were told to shelter in place because those fires release heavy metals and toxins into the air, not to mention the toxins that go into the soil. We've talked about land reclamation in 40 years. What happens if this project doesn't make 40 years? Who pays for the land reclamation? We talked about turning it back to ag. It is ruined. I can show you the data and the studies that come out of universities and academia professionals I've talked to, the galvanized metal that's used, the toxins that are going to leak when things break, even if Cypress gets straight on it, those are going to be issues on that land, and it goes straight down to Kiowa Creek, which is, again, going to be an environmental impact. But let's talk about fire. We have a small fire department. All the fire departments around here are small. They are six miles away. A fire starts in that solar farm. It is nine miles from the school, and it is a dead end down County Road 154. And if that happens at any time during the day or even in the middle of the night, my neighbors are trapped. There is no exit for them if that fire starts at the solar farm and blows back with the north or northwesterly winds that we get. We know that the prairie grass is dry. It is dry most of the year. It is, you get a spark and you get the wind, and all of a sudden, my house and everything else, we don't have time to get out before the wind blows that fire. I did read an interesting article also.
Pardon me, Chair.
Thank you. For a fire, it was written about specifically fighting fires in solar farms is very difficult. If you think of 263,000 panels with grass underneath it, even if they manage the vegetation, it is very, very difficult for fire departments to get in and put that out before it blows through towards the school or towards my neighbors down County Road 154. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Thank you.
I'm David Healy, I live at 2795 Gold Creek Drive in Elizabeth. I saw in those numbers up there that the battery storage is 200 megawatt-hours, okay? I want to point out that the battery pack in a Tesla is 100 kilowatt-hours. So this is roughly equivalent to 2,000 Tesla battery packs. That's a lot of batteries. I was driving down Parker Road last summer, up towards Parker, and I happened to drive by a Tesla that had just started on fire. This was all over the local news, it was on TV in Denver. It burned for hours. I pulled over at the pinery in the parking lot there just to look at it, and I noticed the smell was, it wasn't like a barbecue, I'll tell you that. It was horrific. And I was a half-mile away. So I want to talk about fires, and the previous woman mentioned some of this. You know, the number of these battery installations is skyrocketing, and the fires aren't increasing as fast as they are. That's been mentioned already. But we still have them. In the last two or three years, since about '22, '23, there have been six fires at these facilities around the country. There's been two in New York, there's been three or four in California, and maybe one in Washington State. The biggest happened in January at a place called Moss Landing in Monterey County, California. It's roughly in the Bay Area. It was the largest ever, and it also happened to be the largest battery installation in the world. It burned for days. They have to let it burn itself out. It destroyed 80% of the facility. People are still complaining about a metallic taste in their mouth, about burning eyes, burning in their noses, dizziness, headaches. They've, I read this in the New York Times, they have found heavy metals, because there's more than lithium in lithium ion batteries, you know, there's nickel, there's cobalt. And they're finding these metals in soil samples five miles from the site. I'll bet that doesn't help property values. They're finding it in the water. So you don't want one of these fires. And from what I've read, the NFPA standards have not been updated in several years. They were designed for, they were designed for much smaller installations, a fraction of the size of this one. And so I read a press release from AIG. Insurance companies are really getting concerned about this, and so their recommendation was much more spacing, far more spacing between these battery units. I think the old NFPA standard was like three feet, and they're saying it's got to be many times more than that. Because you want to be able to keep these things from just simply starting and catching each other, which is what happened at Moss Landing. 80% of that facility was burning. It was a, it was a 3,000, it was much, much bigger than this one, megawatt-hour facility. So the fire's a real concern here. And I have a question also. I drove by that big solar farm on the way to the airport, if you take Kiowa Bennett Road. You go off on County Road 30, and it's about a mile to the west. And there is a massive water tower there, and there's no, like, houses or anything else around there. So I'm wondering, I mean, they're saying they don't, you know, they'll be able to truck in water during construction, and they'll only wash the panels every three years, but I mean, why would that place? I would just be curious about that personally. Maybe they could answer that. And that's my comments, thank you.
Thanks, David.
Hello again. Carrie Giblets, 19656 Wiedemeyer Road, Elbert County Environmental Alliance. I wish I could be as well-spoken as Ray Marie is. Her presentation was awesome. I'm used to talking to six-year-olds and teaching them how to read, so I'll do the best that I can. I've done a lot of research into the 1041s as it pertains to the Excel Power Pathway. And so what I did is I tried to dive in to this application and apply the same resources to it, compare it to the 1041s. And I had some questions and concerns. First of all, was Article 15, which talked about local government service. And I looked at Exhibit Q, which was the correspondence with the Kiowa Fire Protection. And so Zach, I was really glad to see that you were able to touch base with Chief Lemansky, because in your packets, in the application, there was correspondence where they were trying to meet but never did meet. And Chief Lemansky expressly asked if there was going to be battery storage on the site. And he also asked for, in lieu of impact fees, a donation of $15,000 to $20,000 for wildland gear, since funds for such equipment are incredibly limited, and I think would be very useful in case of a fire, which David just described. He did include the list of solar development requirements for the project review, but it was unclear if you were ever to meet. So I'm glad that you were able to meet. What I could tell from the application, though, is that you're not donating the $20,000 for wildland gear, instead, you're just donating a sign. So I'm not sure how that is going to help. Article 17 talked about the local economy, and in the application, it says that Sundance Solar is not anticipated to have any significant impact on the value, use, or development of surrounding properties, and the solar installation will not interfere with the market value of future sale or future sale of neighboring parcels. I did some research into property values around solar facilities and found that the property value decreases from 1.5% to 6%. And I came across the same study from Berkeley Labs, where they said there is greater devaluation found in rural areas, where these large-scale photovoltaic projects, that's not in my vocabulary, are placed on previously agricultural land, and that's what this is. So I would imagine a decrease of at least 6% in their property values and the property values around. They talked a lot about the tax revenue, and it's expected to generate $9.8 million in cumulative revenue for Elbert County. And I would just ask you to run those figures by the county staff to see if that seems right. Article 19 talked about environmental impact analysis and description of the viewpoints and view sheds, scenic vistas. Their application says there are no known visually sensitive areas. And then they also state that it's hilly undeveloped agricultural land with sparse rural residential dwelling with Kiowa Creek less than a third of a mile away. Well, to me, that makes it visually sensitive. It's wide-open spaces, and you're putting this big industrial complex in. So I think our values are a little bit different. I think this project would disrupt the natural beauty. The lighting within the project footprint, this is the application says, would be restricted to emergency lighting and lighting around the substation. But our 1041s specifically say to limit light pollution. I know that my neighbor, who is a half-mile away, lights up his driveway every night, and I would love for him to turn that out. Because when I go to look at the stars with that one bright light, it's light pollution. So I can't imagine what light around 600 acres is going to be. Talked about the surface water quality. Now, again, this is not in my wheelhouse at all. They did Exhibit E, Sundance Wetland and Water Body Delineation Report. It references the Sackett Decision, which talks about that only streams that flow year-round are subject to federal oversight, and that only wetlands that had a surface connection to continually flowing water bodies qualified for protection. But many wetlands in Colorado have a subsurface connection to streams rather than one that can be observed above the ground. Their report finds that there are 19 wetlands and 11 open water features identified within the project area, but none have a continuous hydrologic connection to a potential jurisdictional water, so they don't qualify for protection. In other words, they can't see it, so it doesn't qualify for protection.
Pardon me, Chair.
Five minutes? Okay, can I finish?
You have to wrap up.
I'll finish this part. So there is a Colorado Task Force working on bridging that gap, but currently there are no regulations in effect, but I'm sure there soon will be. And the Army Corps of Engineers believes that there may be jurisdictional waters of the United States on the subject site, and the permit applicant who requested this preliminary jurisdictional determination, they declined to exercise the option to obtain an approval in this instance. So they did not get the approval from the Army Corps of Engineers. So I also have some things about CPW.
Pardon the interruption, but.
Pardon me?
It's been five minutes plus.
Okay, all right.
I'm sure other people will bring up your topics. Next up, Kevin Malden.
Kevin Malden, 38101, Kiowa Bennett Road. I'm right across the street to the west, I'm on the creek side. And it's been a long evening, so I'll keep this short. I endorse this project. I don't have any problem with it. I'd rather see the solar panels than a bunch of housing. I just, I don't, I don't think they're ugly. I have no problem with it. And I've read every bit of the information that's been put out, and as long as, as long as everything is done the way it says we're going to do it, and I think it's fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Jane Pendley.
Let's make this short. Jane Pendley, 625 County Road 45, Kiowa. I just wanted to inform you that this property will not be valued by the local assessor. It will be state-of-valued totally, except for the land. The land will remain agricultural grazing land, which is approximately $30 an acre. So there will be no additional money to the county by the property owner. I totally agree with everything that anyone has said today. This project is a detriment to Elbert County. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane.
Sorry. Don Gray, 16,000 Highway 86. Hi again. A couple different things I'd like to bring up, and I'm going to spread it around the room just a little bit, and then I'm going to continue what Carrie was going on about here. First off, they mentioned water. During the construction, water out here is a big deal, obviously, to everybody. You say you're going to truck it in. Does that mean you're going to truck it across the road? Or are you going to truck?
Don, can you address the panel, the panel commission, please?
Sorry. Are you going to truck it in across the road, or are we going to cross it in from a different county? Where are we trucking this water in from? It's just a semantic, but, and I don't imagine it'll be a whole lot of water for the construction part of it, the phase. You also mentioned that you're going to have four different individuals that are going to have full-time positions within the county. Can we get a commitment from the developer that those jobs will come from within the county? We'll hire residents of Elbert County to fulfill those positions. Obviously, the construction jobs, they could move on with the construction and whatnot. To pick up where Carrie was leading, there are several different segments where you talked about CPW. And there's studies that have been shown that there's hawks nesting in the area, and previously CBW recommended that there be no surface disturbance or encroachment within a half-mile of that nest between February 1st and July 15th. Well, according to the 1041, there are some stipulations that construction could be stopped for that point in time to give that, the nesting bird the length of time that they needed. That's a six-month period. Are they willing to close down their operation? They're saying they're going to take them 18 to 24 months to develop the project. Are they going to close down that project for that length of time in order to accomplish One of the other things that was brought up is that they give a map and description of the all-known sites of paleontological, historical, and archaeological interest. Well, the results of that cultural study, they basically say is proprietary. So that means to me that they're saying that the nature of that information is sensitive, so they're not going to share that with the community, or one would assume with the panel here tonight. So again, once again, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Debbie Ulum? I know I butchered that name, sorry.
Go back to Baker. So Debbie Ulum, 11195 Copper Canyon Circle. So my home is right on the east side of Kiowa Bennett. I look down on Kiowa Bennett. I will tell you our truck traffic, and our traffic is phenomenal. Last summer, we looked out the window off of our deck that has a beautiful view of Kiowa Creek, which, by the way, Excel wants to march down, but semi-going through with a load of hay, and the back four bales are on fire. Well, gosh. Now... on fire. Well, gosh. Now, granted, if that had, and it just went past where the solar farm's going to go, the fire wouldn't have been their fault. All those chemicals, all those batteries, what's going to happen, and where's it going to go? And I'm still going to live there. It's a problem for me. No, I don't want 4,000 homes there either. I respect what he said, but I don't want 1,100 acres of solar panels either, or 600, which it turns out to be. This project did come before Kiowa Fire in 2018. I sat on the board at that time. I chose not to attend the meetings. I, at that time, knew what was going on with Cypress and Sundance. At that point, there was talk that Kiowa Fire was going to get almost $200,000. That would have brought on staff and fire trucks. I didn't have a problem with that. I thought, okay, it's a sacrifice we have to make, but we're going to get some protection for the citizens of Elbert County and Kiowa. I want you to know that that, now, in '23, those rules were changed. We don't get any impact fees. I am still on the board. I have one month left. But you know what? We're not getting impact fees. We're getting $15,000 towards a sign. Yeah, it's the last sign as you leave the town of Kiowa. But when you head down Kiowa Bennett, the solar farm's, one of the last things you're going to see as you head out of Elbert County on Kiowa Bennett. It's not the mark I want to leave. 2% to Elbert County. I really struggle with that. I just built property. I had to pay impact fees. I'm a commercial entity. Why is this not a commercial entity? This is a business selling a product. I know you guys don't have control of that. But I do think the county needs to reevaluate what they're going to get for permit fees and the percentage they're going to get on the construction costs. I'm really struggling with those ag taxes. It's a commercial endeavor. Anybody else that's doing that is paying commercial taxes. I know I am, and I've grown up here, and I'm not leaving. So I just want you guys to consider this as you do this. Kiowa Fire struggles. We have two full-time employees. We have a four, total of four, but we thrive off of our volunteers, and God bless them, because they're going to come get any one of us when we're in a wreck or our house is on fire, or the trailer is dragging a chain and sparking down Kiowa Bennett and sets off a grass fire. We've watched it happen twice last summer. It will happen. Will we be able to protect the solar farm?
Thank you. That is the last name I have on my list. I think we have a few folks that still want to talk. You got your finger up first, so we'll go for you first, and then the gentleman with the cowboy hat.
My name's Larry Willard. I live at 13250 County Road 154. I share a mile of property line between Dave Eamon and myself. I'm all along the east side of it and half a mile back down the south side of it. I have approximately six 40-acre lots that I have intended to sell. I'm going to be 79 years old in less than a month, and I'm ready to retire. This ranch is supposed to be my retirement, and what's happening? We're going to pay Dave Eamon and his family millions, millions of dollars over the life of this 40-year project. I'm not going to be here for the end of it. There are some other people in this room that are not going to be around for that 40-year end. They're going to receive millions of dollars over the life of this thing in terms of the lease. It's going to cost me hundreds of thousands in lost revenue to sell my property, and I don't care what they're talking about, 6% or 7%. If those of you out here were looking for a 35- or 40-acre lot to buy, they're selling for $230,000 just across the fence south from me. That's not going to happen. You wouldn't buy a piece of property that backed up to a solar farm. You would not. There's nobody in this room that would buy that piece of property. So it's a simple matter of mathematics, and I know this has nothing to do with the application or anything else, but it has to be said. Thank you.
Come on up.
Hi. My name's Tad Knowles, 39244, Kiowa Bennett Road. Like my wife, we work in ag, and we work in sustainable ag. And when you think of that, this whole deal, this application has to benefit Elbert County. And $9.8 million, nickel here, nickel there, nickel there, and their accountants come up with this number. They're not giving you $9.8 million. And actually, they're, I don't like to see housing out where I live. I don't like to see a subdivision. But in the long run, if they build a subdivision there, say they put a Sinclair gas station there and maybe a middle school or something like that, as much as I don't want to see that around me, that will appreciate my property. That will make my property worth more. I means, adjacency rule means I can subdivide my property. I can put in a storage unit where people can store their boats and RVs because they built a covenant-controlled subdivision down the road. It's not what I want, but that would help me out financially. See these, these hands right here? These are calluses. That money these calluses make go to fund the government, which funds this, which we don't want. This could be a grassroots effort for us to take a stand right here, right now, and say, no, we're not going to do this, because this is all government-funded BS, and we all know it. Everybody here knows it. Even the people on the side of it say, oh, but it's sustainable, and we're going to do this, do that. When it's defunded, they're going to change the name of their company. That solar panel's going to rot, and it's going to deteriorate, and there's going to be nobody, Dave Eamon especially, ain't going to be around to clean it up. So when you look at the long run of our county and how we want it to look, how we want to progress our county, this is not right, and you know it. So this is not helping our county, which makes this application void. Thank you.
Okay. Blue shirt in the back.
My name is Beverly Durant. I live at 40968 Kiowa Bennett Road. I just want to reiterate some of the things that people have said. My first comment is, there was no public notice of the materials you all just received. What does that do to the legality of tonight if the public cannot see what you guys are even talking about or considering? Water is a huge issue here. It's going to pollute the water. It's going to pollute Kiowa Creek. It's going to pollute the ground. No matter what they say, the storms that we have out here are going to break panels. Those toxic chemicals are going to go into the land, into the ground, and into our water. What's that going to do to everybody around there? Fire danger is huge. It's going to take Kiowa Fire Department 20 to 30 minutes to get to that place if there's a fire. Even if they have individuals there, you all know that anybody who lives in this county, it takes almost 30 minutes to get anywhere. So if they're not there at the middle of the night, it's going to take them a while to get there, then take Kiowa Fire a while to get there. By that time, most of the homes in that area are going to be gone. Everything will be destroyed because of what type of area it is. It's monitored out of state when those people aren't there. What's that going to do? Again, they'll have to call somebody. They'll have to get there, and then fire will get there. It's just not going to be adequate for out here. The traffic on Kiowa Bennett is atrocious with all the trucking. Every semi uses that, and there are accidents constantly. There are fires because of all these big trucks, and again, that's going to be a huge danger to every single neighbor in that area. The wildlife destruction is going to be also with the eagles, which we've all seen that live out there, all of the antelope, all the deer. They use that area. They're there every single day, and this is going to do nothing for them. So you tell a pronghorn to go where they're going to have the gates that open so they can get through? That's not very practical when you think about it. So I would just hope that you would consider all the comments that were made here tonight and do what's best for Elbert County, not from out-of-state companies, not from out-of-county people who want this, but do what's best for this county and every single citizen and landowner that's here. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak? Going once? Like an auctioneer here. All right, folks. Thank you very much for the public comment. We will close off public comment. Zach, would you like to address the concerns?
Yes.
Hello?
Y'all hear me?
Yeah, let's, let's take a five-minute bio break, and I do mean five minutes. So come back here at 9:47:03.
I missed the watch stuff.
I saw your face.
Are you guys going to be...? Okay.
That's a little too deep down, isn't it? That seems like asking person.
Yeah.
Guys, I should be the person for finding.
You don't get those.
I was going to say everything we should.
I'm taking a chair.
I'm letting you know.
And then they make it a little...
So all of that is, I think, we're going to have to be...
We had you guys.
Yeah, I mean, there's a, there's a lot of discussion.
You know, for some, for some of those respects, I'm sure so, but...
But I mean, that already, I get to, you know.
You figure out how to do that, let me know.
Yeah.
I guess.
Yeah, I'm just trying to facilitate the discussion.
You know, but, you know, and I was trying to come up with, would you rely fully on those other...
I mean, that becomes, I'm sure that would come up.
I like to do some answers right here for the response, for the comments.
You guys feel like we're going to text us?
Yeah.
Well, we had a little question out there, too, because I have my...
Not saying that that's correct or right either, but it's...
Everyone, please take their seats. Everyone, please take their seats.
Okay, folks, let's go ahead and start taking our seats. We're two minutes over. All right, so we're going to get back into this hearing. If you don't mind, please take your seats. No, it's, I can't take my shoe off. It would be too much. Zach, if you would like to address the concerns raised by the citizens?
Yes, sir. First off, thank you, everybody, for your questions, comments, concerns, wanting to be educated, whatever that may be. I really appreciate everybody's communication here in the community. I only wrote down, I wrote down a good amount of them. I don't know if I got every single one. I'll try my best, but I wanted to just point out a couple things, and I won't, I won't... name people because I forgot what everybody exactly said. But just a couple of notes I have. So first thing was number of panels. I think the number mentioned was around closer to 300,000. We do have about 170,000, so it was almost double what the actual size is. Just wanted to put that for the record. Oh, the fire code comment as well, something about the NFPA code. That was actually referred to us by the Elizabeth Fire Department. They wanted us to acknowledge that our batteries are in compliance, in compliance with that because that is what they judge their batteries off of. So we were able to acknowledge that's the only reason I was on the sideshow. I know another thing that was mentioned was moss landing. I wanted to just point out a couple of things on that. Won't get too detailed into it just due to a lot of things that are not worth talking about, but the first thing is just the makeup of the moss landing batteries. Nickel cobalt, as mentioned by the individual who said that, and our batteries are not that makeup, so completely different makeup. Those are nickel cobalt, ours are lithium ion phosphate, completely different makeup of batteries, so pretty relevant. They're also building-based. During my slide, I talked about building-based, building-based versus container-based. Container-based is what we're using on this project, having, you know, eight, eight separate containers in a row rather than one building with eight containers. And that is what actually the biggest thing went wrong in moss landing was that it was just a container, a building-based battery. So as mentioned, he's actually correct, the whole thing lit on fire because one thing lights on fire. Our batteries are not designed to do that. We do have individual cooling systems inside of each battery. That's why they're called container-based batteries. The other thing that's different about our batteries compared to the moss landing batteries is ours do have water pipe systems. The moss landing batteries have proven that they did not have those installed. And then also, our batteries are from high thium. It's a proven track record. The batteries that they were using were not from the most proven track record manufacturer. So I just wanted to point out just a couple of differences that really Sundance Batteries and the Moss Landing Batteries are completely different. Another thing that was mentioned was the donation for Kawa Fire Department. Yes, we were originally planning to donate the $15,000 to fire, for wildland gear. However, Chief Lemansky and I, last time we met, just a couple of weeks ago when I was here, actually said that he was able to get funding from another, from another resource for the wildland gears that was already taken care of. So he asked us if he could reallocate our 15,000 for a sign instead of the wildland gears, so now he has both. Another, another thing that was mentioned on the Kawa Fire District on the financial side of things, I know that someone said something around this is just 15K for the Fire Department. That's very invalid and not true at all. We do have a breakout showcasing that the current agricultural use would produce about 24,000, or sorry, $2,400 over the next 40 years would be going to Kawa Fire District by approving our project. That 2,000 goes to 1.4 million, so it's not 15,000, it's 1.4 million going to the Kawa Fire District directly. If you do the math on that, I'm not perfect at math, but it's somewhere around $40,000 a year. I know that $200,000 was mentioned previously, and so it will be much greater than that over the course of the project. Another thing that was mentioned, light pollution around the entire fence line, that's also not true. There will not be lights around the entire property. It would just, as mentioned in the slide deck, just be around the substation area. The battery is right next to the substation area, so it will not be surrounding the entire 600 acres. It will be less than a couple hundred feet of lights. And what comes with that, too, is obviously this project was intentionally sited. It's as remote as we can possibly have projects. We have projects at Cypress Creek that are surrounded by, by homes, and that's obviously a little bit more difficult, but there is no light pollution expected to any of the homes that are within a certain radius of this project. Another question was where is the water going to be trucked in from? I might call McCarthy up in a little bit here to go into that, but we are currently sourcing our water from Bennett, not, not Elbert County. I don't know why I wrote, oh, another point that was mentioned was local jobs, talking about the operations and maintenance folks and the construction folks. That is our goal. I mean, obviously, it's not always, it's not always applicable to hire all locally, right? You only have so many electricians here in Elbert County, whatever that may be. But part of our, part of our initiative is to hire as local as possible, and whether that's Elbert County and if it needs to branch outside of that a little bit more, then we will do so, but that is our number-one goal for sure with all of our projects, not just here in Elbert County. And I feel like there was a lot of comments surrounding, I don't know, just, just the emotion of, of, you know, not wanting to look at it or things like that, and I totally appreciate and understand that comment and feedback. I just wanted to just put it out there, it is, it is private landowner rights, and so this is what our, our deal has been struck upon is our landowner that, that has decided to do this with his land. I will also mention that for Cypress Creek Renewables, Core, any project in general across the United States, it is, it is so optimal to have a site, a site, a site cited, a project site that's cited right on top of a substation. It's very difficult to do. A lot of that land is already encumbered with other things. It really, you know, benefits the cost-effectiveness of the project. It also really mitigates a lot of disturbances when you're right on top of, of the, you know, the point of interconnection, which we luckily are. And so that, that's why it's like that, right? I mean, we signed this project to be a, to be a core play, to serve the core grid, and we're right on top of a core station. It really can't get any cleaner than the way we've sited this project. Another thing that was mentioned was the $9.8 million being derived from an ex, from our internal Cypress Creek accounting team. I just wanted to, for the record, state that that's, that's not true. It's not from Cypress Creek. It is from an external professional tax consultant. We wanted to do that especially actually just to make sure that bias was not involved, so that that was not derived internally, that was from an external consultant. That external consultant is actually ranked, I believe, number one in the world in tax consulting. Construction is temporary. I've said that multiple times, but I just want to reiterate, it is 12 to 15 months. So folks had some stuff about, you know, traffic or whatever, you know, trucks and all sorts of things around, along Kawa Bennett Road. I just want to point out, it is temporary, so it's 12 to 15 months. And then after that, it's a self-sufficient project that is going to power this local community. It's going to provide benefits to core customers and the local community from our side of things as well. Cypress Creek is still ongoing. We are meant to be long-term partners. We are trying to be a part of this community as best as we possibly can with donations and investments and really listening to the community's feedback. If there's anything in particular that folks have even in this room after, please find me, grab my business card, and let's talk about it. But it is very minimal traffic for, you know, and it's for 12 to 15 months of the entire lifecycle of the project, and it's operating by itself. The last thing I'll mention, and I know I probably missed some points, so feel free to contact me after if any folks want direct answers. I didn't get a chance to write them all, I'm not the fastest typer. But I wanted to just point out, like, finally, that this is a reliable, a reliable project. It's meant to diversify the energy grid. Core obviously has their goals to meet, as Mark mentioned. This is part of those goals. It's reliable, it's self-sufficient, it's going to diversify and create the grid to be more resilient. The batteries in particular are very important to make sure that, you know, there's enough power to power the grid in low periods of sunlight or whatever that may be. They can release those batteries at any given point and make sure everybody in the community does have power. Demand has significantly increased here in Elbert County and even broader. You know, with all my projects, I own the Colorado market here at Cypress Creek. We've got about six or seven projects, and it's pretty much a similar case for every single county in which I work, just due to demand increase. Quiet, self-sufficient. The project, you know, provides exponential benefits to the community. It's not a hundredfold, it's not 200-fold, according to the math of the community tax revenue, it's actually 600-fold what this project would be able to do for, for this community. Yeah, and the goal is to provide a reliable energy source. So that's all my comments. I might, am I allowed to invite people up to speak about one or two other things that I missed?
Yeah, sure, why not?
I was just going to ask maybe McCarthy to come up just super quickly, because there was a couple of points that were a little bit towards their scope.
Step up to the mic, please.
Jim Barber, and longtime resident of Bennett. I grew up there, went to high school there, and I will be the superintendent on this project. The water we're sourcing is coming from an irrigation well at Bennett. It's not from the town of Bennett. It's an irrigation well just outside the town of Bennett. There was a comment about a water tower on Quincy that belongs to Arapahoe County. There can be no water brought out of that tower. The state got into, involved, the state water got involved. That water can only be used on that plot of land for Arapahoe County, which is, I think, roughly 20 to 40 acres. They spent quite a bit of money, thought they were going to use it for their road construction. They can't use it. Found that out on my investigation because I was going to go talk to them. So that's what that water tower is. It's not for the solar.
Greg Arcan, McCarthy. The lighting pollution, we're, we're meeting the IES standards, which is like one-foot candle. It's very, very minimal. Quite frankly, this, this site could require something even less due to your, your regular maintenance. That's usually a standard for egress only, is about one-foot candle. What we also are going to do full cutoffs so that there is no spill. I mean, most developments you see nowadays in Colorado will have the spill protection with full cutoffs on, on all the site lighting, so that means it won't extend past the property line. Zach, any other questions? Well, I thank you for being here and good luck with your decision.
Thanks. So all public comment is closed off, including contracts. We may ask y'all back up to the table to answer some of our questions, so. But I'd like to go ahead and start and go around the table with the planning commission. DeeDee, you want to start? All right, we'll, we'll put you down, push you down to Van, so. Mic on, Van, and use the mic.
I said renewable energy is the future, and there's two types of renewables, wind and solar. I work for a company that put up more wind generators in this state than any other firm. And I can tell you this, okay? Wind is a lot more problematic than solar. Just a little story. We put up a, a wind generator at the ski area outside of Boulder. And you know how windy it can get in Boulder, or if you don't, go there sometime and you'll see. I lived in that for 20 years. We put that wind generator up there, and within two months, it broke off the propeller and it went cartwheeling down the ski area. That's how problematic a wind generator can be. Solar, you put it up, it's there, it works. There's far less problems with solar. And this is something that we need out here, because if you take a look at it, we're using more and more energy, and I'd much rather have a solar farm than I would have a, a smoke stack pumping out pollution. So that's my take on this.
Thanks, Van. Dan?
Yeah, I have a number of questions, Zach, mostly to you and then a couple to the gentleman from Core. You know, I researched your company, you have extensive experience. I'd like to know a little more about your experience here in Colorado. Have you done similar type of projects in Colorado?
Yes, sir, we have. So on that map, we have two other current operating projects.
And slow down when you talk for me, just, I'm a little slow.
Sorry about that. So we do have two other current operating projects in Colorado, and that map was showcasing them. That map did not showcase projects that are in active development. So as mentioned, I own the Colorado market. We got about six projects in active development currently. The other two, one of them was a community solar project, so a little bit smaller in this, this project, and then the other one is very similar in size. So we do have experience in Colorado. It's not our main market. We are an eastern region-based company, so the Carolinas is our hot market. That's where our headquarters are. South Carolina and North Carolina is, is a large part of our portfolio. But I am on the Western Region Development Team representing today, and we, we have six or eight states across the Western Region as well.
So 75 megawatts, how does that fit into your sweet spot?
As a company?
Is that like, I mean, what's, what's the range of some of your utility scale? And how does this one compare with what you typically specialize in?
Yes, sir, it's actually much smaller. Our average size is about 150 to 200 megawatts. Our battery sizing, so this is a 50-megawatt battery, that's a solar portion. On the battery side, this battery is 50 megawatts, our average is around 50 to 150. But the overall portfolio, I'll just tell you from my experience, I do own six to seven projects that I work on every day at Cypress Creek. This is my smallest project. Largest is about 500 megawatts.
Do you depend on subsidies for this project?
I honestly am not the right person to answer that. I have, I am on the development team and I have no clue. I can't, I can't answer that, honestly.
Where are your panels coming from? What country?
So for this panel, we're using, I believe we're using Boviet, but that's also not in my wheelhouse. It's probably a better question for someone else. Any? This is for, it's Boviet. I do know, but I don't think we've.
If you're going to answer, please step up to the microphone, please.
They have several offices as well.
Yes, so.
Are they being sourced domestically?
That's the question.
Are they being sourced in like China, where most panels?
We do not source any of our modules from China anymore. We've worked very hard to shift all of our module buys and anything else we can away from China. Thailand, Vietnam, we have some coming from Mexico. Currently, Boviet, who we are working with, we are trying to get at least a partial amount of domestic for this site, and that is actually going to be in North Carolina. I'm visiting the warehouse next week. It's in Greenville.
With, with the, with the tariffs that are hitting most, you know, Asian countries, how could that impact the economics of this job? It could be a substantial game changer.
Yeah, it could. I mean, it's, it's separate, too, right? So we have to cut two POs for this project, one for panels, one for batteries. I will say Boviet is our main manufacturer for the panels right this second. As Andy just mentioned, they do have a, a United States manufacturing office in North Carolina. And on the battery side, again, neither, neither one of these POs has been cut, so it's, I'm not the, the right person, I'm just stating the facts. The battery side of things, they do also have an office, the manufacturing office that they opened in Texas, Dallas, Texas, I believe. So could come from any of those as well.
How do you determine the life cycle? I mean, how do you come up with 40 years in example? What goes into that?
I'm not sure what determines it. I mean, the life cycle of, of a solar panel in general is what determines it, once you start seeing technology changes and things of that nature. I mean, just for, for example, right now, right, they're changing the wattage of panels every so, every so many years. It's, it's very incremental, so it might go from 500 megawatts to 505 megawatts, or 500 watts to 500, 505 watts. So through the, through the life cycle of this project, really 30 to 40 years is the average lifespan of the, of the panels, and that's what is the average, I guess, of how long it could actually make sure that it's going to put out 75 megawatts before technology needs to be increased.
Can you discuss the bond process a little bit? Because that's really important. You've heard a number of people express concerns, and this has happened in renewables. It's happened, you know, perhaps with less frequency, when companies go out of business and all of a sudden, you have a project sitting there without cash flow. How does the bond ensure that if something like that were to happen, that that property would be completely reclaimed?
It's a fantastic question. I appreciate that question. I'm, I'm not the person to answer that either. I'm, I'm in development, so I'm not on the decommissioning side of things.
You're dodging a lot of questions. Are there other people that can answer in the room?
Nobody here in the room. Sorry, Ryan Keeney with Cypress Creek. Nobody currently here in the room, but we are more than happy to follow up and writing with, with an answer to that question, no problem.
That's an important thing.
Primarily here we have our development team and our project managers, not our decommissioning in the, in the backside of things, but I am writing notes on all these questions that can get you in the right S and M's wheelhouse.
Hi, my name's Addison Fairchild. I'm an attorney with Holland &amp; Hart, counsel for Cypress Creek. I can kind of give like a general example of how the bond would work, but basically what they would do is prepare a decommissioning plan, which would estimate how much it's going to cost to fully renew, remove the project at the end of its life. And then that would be counteracted against how much they could actually salvage the, the remaining panels and everything for. And so what they would do is take that number and post that bond with the county so that in the event that Cypress Creek were to cease to exist or something, the county could draw on those numbers and draw on that bond to complete the decommissioning itself. I'm not an expert on that, but that's just kind of a general.
I will also add, too, that the decommissioning report and estimate that we have in our application, that is who we use for our, our decommissioning third-party work, so it, it does outline the process in there as well, salvage value, et cetera.
I have a question for the gentleman from Core. Roughly, what are your inputs for electricity? How much comes from, from natural gas? How much comes from solar? How much comes from wind? And what is, what's trending?
So today, we are roughly 40% renewable, mostly solar. Our largest single contributor right now is coal, which is coming from our Comanche III power plant near Pueblo. That is currently scheduled to decommission in 2030. So as that comes off, we will have to replace more than half of our current power supply. So, as that comes off, we will have to replace more than half of our current power supply.
How competitive is solar with coal or solar with natural gas? And, you know, when we recognize that there is emphasis on more renewables and more solar, you know, for our community, cost becomes very important. Is it a competitive input? Competitively priced input?
It is definitely a competitive source of energy. I will not tell you it will ever be cheaper than Comanche III. That will always be our cheapest source of power until it goes away in 2030.
John?
I believe all my questions have been answered.
Robert? Where do I start? With regard to concerns about emergency response, did I hear someone say that the monitoring of this facility is going to be at a remote location in North Carolina? And it's based on a SCADA platform, is that true?
That is one of the parts of surveillance.
Is that based upon a VSAT technology or a dedicated line to the facility?
Not my question. Thank you, Annie.
We would actually have redundant service, so we would have Wi-Fi and dedicated line.
Dedicated, and so SCADA, so is it based upon report by exception then to all of your monitoring systems that are overseeing all of your projects?
I'm not fully sure about that, but I can say that we have an alert system that's going to be redundant. It's going to have electrical and mechanical alerts that will trigger notifications in the control house.
And then, based upon your normal protocol, then you have the procedures associated with calling local fire department, local police, and everything else associated with that?
Yes, correct. We would have worked for the emergency response plan, worked with them.
Do you provide reports, monthly reports, quarterly reports on your response times?
I can't say that, sorry.
That's for the operations and maintenance team. I can get back to you.
Yeah, I'd like to see that. Because that's super important.
Definitely.
Background in telecommunications and network operations centers on this side. And, you know, meantime, for reporting, meantime for repair, meantime for call-out, the tiering of escalation, you know, in regards, that would be a real important question for understanding. How are you going to be able to call out in an appropriate and timely manner based upon the response times that people are talking about? They're absolutely correct. It's 30 to 40 minutes based upon, you know, physical location of those individuals who are volunteers getting into that fire department and to be able to respond in a timely manner. So, the shorter your cycle is, the shorter their cycle is, you know, as well.
Yeah, I mean, and I'll also add too, I think specifically on the battery side of things, the hytheum manufacturer that we're using that has the battery-specific emergency response plan, which is a little bit different than the Cypress Creek direct response plan, I think both those work very well together. They're very separate. You know, each type of fire could be, I guess, their own risk, but they're also very, they're very separate. So, the emergency response plan with the hytheum is different than our total response plan. So, both those have been communicated with Kauai Fire Department. And just to remind, that is only one part of surveillance. So, the game cameras on site, mixed with the O and M folks actually present on site, all that is tied together.
So, in regards to the battery banks, are they fully self-contained with the, not only the cooling, but the fire suppression?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Are they tubbed in case, so if there is any leakage, it's maintained inside the tub?
Yes, they have tested these in pools to make sure that they're waterproof.
What are the size of the individual containers? What are the megawatt rating of each container?
Five megawatts.
Five megawatts, and so 50, did you say? So, you're going to have.
50 megawatts total.
You're going to have 10 containers, okay. And are those DC-only plants, or do they have the built-in inverters?
They're AC, they're built-in inverters.
Built-in inverters, okay. And the POI, what's the handoff voltage for the POI?
115.
115?
Yes, sir.
115,000 volts.
Okay, 115,000, okay. And for, are the solar cells themselves inverter-enabled, or is there a separate inverter plant?
We have like inverter blocks across.
So, you have your strings that feed an inverter block that then feeds into the main distribution back in for the POI?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is that above ground or underground?
The wire, the kitting, is going to be underground.
Yeah, we don't have any above. There's no above-ground wiring for this project.
You don't have a microphone, sir.
If you're going to talk, and Wendy was about to correct me because I didn't have mine on, you do need to stand up and come to the table so that we can hear and so we can get it on the recording.
Yeah. Okay. So, one of the criticisms of a project like this, or any infrastructure project in this, let me first ask staff a question. Used by special review versus an industrial zoning? What's the difference?
A solar project is only allowed in ag zoning or A2 zoning. It's not allowed in any other zone district in the county.
Oh, that's interesting.
And so, the SUR is required.
So, no, that makes sense. I just figured it would be more of an industrial, you know, based upon the fact that it's right in on the edge of the EDC. Okay. So, what was my follow-up based upon that? Can't remember. All right. The so the math behind this is the fact that this will support close to 15,000 homes? So, about five megawatts per home, is that how the math works? I mean, no.
No.
Because I was doing math based upon, you know, a megawatt would support 1,000 homes. Is that not, is that not?
That's about, that's about correct.
So, this is 75 megawatts? So, isn't the number higher, boss?
It should be right at 7 KW per home.
7 KW per home, okay, all right. So, I'm way off on that. I was just thinking that this would be able to support greater growth for you, you know, going into the future for considering, you know, the area you're covering in our county. So, going back to a question about, you know, Comanche being scuttled in, you know, 2030, what's your on-demand plan? Because obviously, this is not an on-demand generation plan.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, Core has power purchase agreements for multiple gas-fired generation plants that are dispatchable. We also have power purchase agreements for wind farms and solar, so it's an integrated package.
So, you know, western states and Excel and so on?
We will no longer be purchasing from Excel, no.
All right. So, based upon this migration path that you're on to get to that 80% renewables, you have other sources that would overcome any discrepancy in what you would get from this plant based upon, you know, maintenance, you know, bad weather or wherever the case may be?
That is absolutely correct.
Staff, I think this would have been an excellent one for Sheri to be here to validate a third-party taxation company that they've hired to value what the monies and the revenues would be, you know, coming to the county. You know, Sheri's got obviously, you know, some experience already with some of the wind and solar projects existing in the county. And it'd be just great to have that level, our level of expertise, you know, to validate those numbers. Just something that I thought about, you know, as we were going through this.
Sure, noted. And the project was sent to their office for review, but they are not here tonight.
Yeah, yeah, no, thank you. Well, in that review, does she review it for validation of those numbers, or does she review it for any? What's her criteria for reviewing it then? Do you know, by chance?
I can't say. We didn't have any extensive discussions about it.
Okay. I think for future 1041 projects that are making claims of bazillion, you know, dollars being, you know, the county would be benefit to that, it would be just great to have her or a representative from, you know, the financial side of the county to validate that. Or at least to be able to answer some questions, you know, specific to, especially when they went through a breakdown of what the schools would get, what the fire would get, and so on. And for her to say, yeah, I agree. There was a comment made about Corps of Engineers jurisdiction over certain waters in an application that was not made or necessary. Could that be clarified, please?
Addison Fairchild, I am not an environmental attorney, so this is not my area of expertise. But the reason for that difference is the Supreme Court of the United States made a decision about jurisdictional waters in the last term that requires different ways of delineating it, and that's what that comes from. So, that's not a choice by our client. It is from the United States Supreme Court.
Okay, interesting. All right.
We have one more comment on that, too.
Just on another note, Dylan Costla, I'm with Spirit Environmental. I conducted all the environmental surveys on the site.
Right.
And in terms of the jurisdictional determination, the waters were, because of the SACCA EPA decision, were determined from us, non-jurisdictional. And with the, but the, however, didn't go forward with the approval of that and due to the fact that the design of the site is not going to impact any waters.
Okay.
So, no permit required was approved by the Corps.
Okay, so with regards to that, Annie, I believe someone brought up a concern about the proximity to Kiowa Creek. And so, are there other considerations associated with the build of this facility to have either? I know you have a thousand-foot setback from Kiowa Bennett, but are there going to be any catch basins or anything like that associated with this project?
During construction, there will be a swift implemented to the, so all in terms of water drainage into Kiowa Creek during construction, because that's going to be the time of most impact is when grading is happening.
Right.
Water has moves during grading, so a full sweep will be implemented during construction.
And after construction, anything, you know, based upon the changes in the terrain of the land to support, you know, a proper platform for the solar array?
I'm not sure. Ryan, I don't know if you know the answer to that? Probably the answer better.
Yeah, I mean, the plan is designed to last the life of the project, so I guess, are you asking, is it designed to?
Well, no. What is going to be the runoff situation like after you go in and grade it for installation of the solar panels? I mean, you're not going to want to do this with your solar panels. You're going to want to grade it so it's appropriate for insulation, you know, the running of the subtrain cables and everything else.
We have an entire drainage plan in place for that. It will be redirected through our own drainage system, so it's not going to, water runoff won't be an issue for it. Do we know how long our catch basins are staying? Are they through the life of the project or?
How long what is?
The drainage basins?
No, I'd have to look at the drainage report. I don't have it in front of me.
But I was, I was led to believe, or I'm pretty positive of, is that they are staying the entirety of the project.
Yeah, that's my interpretation as well.
I don't think they're being removed.
All right. So, a lot of comments were made, and I'm not sure if you addressed them appropriately, about surrounding properties and land evaluation based upon proximity to the project, you know, what people, you know, potentially wanted to do with their land, you know, prior to a project like this. It's not only the devaluation, it's also the ability to sell. And no one has really addressed, you know, what that kind of impact would be. I was looking, is Debbie still here? Oh, you are there. You're behind the podium. I mean, you know, impact for, you know, selling property, you know, in proximity to something like this is, you know, the land evaluation, someone can go back in and calculate, okay, I'm going to be losing, you know, a certain amount of value. But if I can't sell it, I get zero value. And that's going to be, you know, with any large-scale project that is relatively close to properties that are, you know, in the process of being subdivided or, you know, existing existing residential, you know, type of situations. Is there any kind of potential to support, you know, those local residences if there is, you know, some sort of stipulation put in place if they're not able to sell with the, you know, with some sort of window, you know, that there can be some sort of compensation for, you know, those particular landowners?
From my understanding, we have never done that in the past, Cypress Creek as a whole, across any of our projects in any state. I would definitely come back to you and learn more about that if we ever have. I've been here for three years at Cypress Creek and renewables for five years, developing projects. I've never seen that done ever. But I would love to get more information on it. I mean, I mean, back to the gist of kind of where you're going with that question, this project is intentionally cited. It's about as remote as we can find. That's on top of a Core substation, right? That is the off-taker. It's about cost-effectiveness, it's about reliability. There's a lot of things that go into the site. And so, although we do not want to make anybody in this audience here today unhappy, we actually have done studies as well, too, and all sorts of numbers are different, right? But it's, I've never seen anything higher than 5%. A lot of studies actually say it's very minimal to not even be taken into account. It just really depends on where you're at in accordance to the site. I know in this room, no one is, you know, direct neighbors. It's all a little bit of distance, so, I mean, it's all give or take.
But, you know, but there's sightlines, there's sightlines that would be, you know, impacted by this, and that's part of the value of living here. I mean, you know, the whole reason why I moved out here 30 years ago was because of what I have for, you know, a visual, you know, landscape, you know, with my particular property. And if all of a sudden someone were to build something next to me that, you know, impairs my ability to sell the ranch or to do something else with the ranch, you know, that's hurtful.
Yes, sir.
And so, I get the, the this is, you know, this is like, you know, you just had a, you know, you just drew a royal flush in the fact that Core's got their substation there, and you're not having to build any kind of, you know, tower arrangement to, you know, to interconnect with them, you know, that's a winner-winner. And that allows you to hopefully price your electrical, you know, handoff to them at a point that it is, you know, competitive. Never be competitive with coal, but, you know, the impact to those neighbors is real. So, that, to me, is, you know, a real consideration that, you know, someone needs to take a really hard look at.
Yes, sir.
Permit fees. So, that was brought up a couple of different times on permit fees. In this particular case, I guess it's 2%. Are there other styles of projects that have a requirement for fees that are higher, for fees that are lower? For fees that are lower?
So the 2% that was mentioned, and that's a recommended condition of approval, is specifically outlined in the fee schedule related to the SUR. Um, there are specific uses to which that applies. Solar is one, wind is another. I would have to pull it up to tell you if there is another in addition to that. So that fee is on top of anything else, and that fee only applies to these types of projects. So that's not, um, in place of something else.
Right.
If that makes sense.
So, so, so the, you know, the question is, are there different types of projects, you know, whether they're smaller or bigger, that, uh, have fees that are higher than 2%? You know, within our fee schedule?
Not, that's not as, that's charged in that way, no. That is very specific to only these types of projects that have a related SUR. So it is an SUR-specific fee for only a few specific uses. Solar being one of them, wind also applying.
Okay, all right.
It is not an impact fee.
No, impact fees are typically separate, you know, based upon, uh, the, the, this, again, the use case of the project, correct? I'm gonna stop there for now.
For now.
Yeah, I may, I may have a follow-up.
Go ahead, Diana.
Okay, I'm Diana Edstrom. Um, I do have a bunch of questions, so. One thing I wanted to point out before I got started for CDS, um, this was a huge package. Um, that's an understatement. It was 2,390 pages. We had approximately five days to review it. Um, I'm, I'm bringing this up because I think people, I mean, I, I have a lot of free time. I'm retired. I had to put about, must have put about 30 hours in here. And I'm not done with this packet, which makes it very difficult to make a decision, especially on an application that is this important. So when I hear about the, the power pathway coming and that's huge, we, we need to get that on the agenda to talk about. How do we get this? Like, I don't know, two weeks ahead of time? But I think it's a conversation that we need to have with CDS. Because this is unfair to everybody, and there's a lot of information in here. It's kind of like one of those tax bills that goes through Congress. You have no idea what's in there. So I did want to point that out. Not to mention the 1041 regulations, which come up not very often. And that's another 50 pages that we had to familiarize ourselves with. So, based on that, and before I, before I forget this, you've been talking about the sighting of this, and please don't say it's as far away from everything as, I mean, I, I'm watching people's faces here, and it's, we love this rural community. We like these open spaces. It's a reason many, many of us live here. So just, you know, just be a little more sensitive there, Guy. The sighting of this and the, the discussion about the core station that's there. And I don't, I don't know if, if this is a coincidence, but when I go back and I look at our assessor records, that land, what I'm seeing at least, the land that that station is sitting on, was sold by Eamon Land to IREA in 2018. The approval for, and, and am I, am I off?
I can answer that.
Oh, good, good.
Mark.
So I don't know if you remember, there was a project that we did in 2018 where we rebuilt a portion of that substation. A portion of that was expanded, which required us to buy that extra strip for Mr. Eamon. The original substation has been there since the early 90s, I want to say.
Okay, yeah, the, the timing of it, I was looking at that, and thank you for, thank you for clearing that up. So for staff, the, um, property number, the parcel number. Um, I've found that in the documents. I found about nine different places that the wrong parcel number is there. And I've got them written down if you want to go through that and make sure that everything is copacetic there. Okay. Uh, let's talk about the lease, since we got that update when we walked in. And bear with me here. Um, so the, the land lease agreement that is in the packet looks fair, uh, thank you. Um, number one, it's not recorded. Why is that?
The memorandum? Memorandum is recorded.
Uh, no, there's no, this has no recording on it.
I have a copy of the recorded, if folks need me to share that.
Okay, um, and just out of curiosity, why, do we know why that wasn't in the packet for us to review?
It should have been in the packet.
Okay. Uh, what was the effective date? Because this has.
It was recorded, um, so originally on this project, again, I've only been in Cypress for, for three years. This was signed up in 2017. I can't speak of why it wasn't before that. Um, but so we, we actually recently found out not too long ago, it was probably six months ago or so, that it was, there, there was never a memorandum ever executed. It was just the lease. So as soon as we got that executed a couple, uh, about six months ago, I sent it to the county for, for recording. And I do have a, a copy of the recorded copy.
Okay, so let me just see if I, I'm so confused. It's 10:30. It's way past my bedtime, but. What's in the packet is the memorandum of lease that is, was recorded July of 2024. It's dated July of 2024. That's got the wrong parcel number on it. That's one of, which I'm assuming you guys, it sounds like you picked up on that. But it only goes, it has this witness fifth section, and then it has a therefore, and it talks about previous amendments, but it only seems to go to the Sixth Amendment, although that information isn't in here. But what we have here is the Eighth Amendment. So I am just, I'm just questioning the, um, accuracy of this. And just haven't had the time to really, really look at it.
Yes, ma'am. And I think I'm starting to pick up on your question a little bit.
Oh, good.
So I'm talking about the memorandum. I think what you're talking about is what's in front of you, which is the Eighth Amendment.
I'm, I'm, yeah, I've, the Eighth Amendment, but what's in the package is the memorandum of lease.
Correct. They, they should both be in there. Um, so this amendment that is sitting in y'all's package that I understand was just in there, that is the most recent updated amendment for the entire lease. This is the final amendment that we've had, or the, the most updated. It may not be final. But this is the amendment that changed the lease effectively, um, with the correct parcel number.
Okay.
So the one parcel number was already correct. The other one was an incorrect number, but the legal description has always been correct. I don't know how that was not picked up in 2017 when this was filed. I was still in college.
Yes.
But, uh, it, it has been fixed. So what you see on this Eighth Amendment of ground lease is 100% are updated.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Sure, sorry, I didn't understand your question.
The quitclaim deeds that are in here, um, and there are the, the two of them. The one that's from April 2017 looked fine, but the one that's from November of 2016, the, the very first description on there, the east half of the southeast quarter of Section 20, um, I don't, looking at the assessor records, I don't show that belongs to Mr. Eamon anymore. I think it belongs to one of the gentlemen that actually got up and made comments. So if this is a document that is supposed to show the ownership, should not this be correct, assuming what I'm saying is correct?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure. You're, you're talking about the one from 2016?
The, the quitclaim, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not entirely sure, but I can tell you for a fact that we do have an updated title commitment um, from, uh, July 2024.
But this isn't a title commitment. This is the proof of ownership of the land for the quitclaim.
Yeah, I can't speak to that.
Okay, um, staff. You're writing this down, I can tell. Okay, thank you. There we've got that, we've got that. When, um, the, some of the information in the packet, um, and this comes back to the financials mostly. Um, it refers to the benefits to Elbert County and its citizens. And some of this is also based on the, um, the magnum economics. And, and there's some claims, I, for lack of a better term, sorry, that, that are in here that I am questioning. And they look really great. But has anybody in our finance department, has Tiffany looked at this? Has, has any of our financial people in the county verified all of these, sorry, claims that are being made about this project? Or are we just accepting what they're giving us?
So I can let you know, as mentioned previously, it was sent to the treasurer's office, and they had the opportunity to review that. They didn't come back with any comments or concerns or questions, um, to myself or to the applicant that I'm aware of.
Right. And it, and it sounds like your answer before is, we don't know what their review will, is that a word? What their criteria is. So I guess what I'm asking is before we approve or even vote on this, we need to know from the county that what we are being told is the planning commission, citizens, taxpayers, however you want to look at it, is, is true. So, um, there is that. Uh, I've got some general questions. Um, the construction process. I, it, it may have been in the 2,000 some-odd pages, and I missed it, but when the construction process starts, and I've watched some videos on YouTube about how solar farms get built, and they've got the big earth movers in there, and they're digging everything up. Is this land gonna be pretty much scraped clean on that 600 acres and regraded? Okay, that's not.
I would like to invite McCarthy to answer that.
Um, not, not entirely. We, we're working with our, our civil teams to come up with the best way to contour the land. We're also using a special, special tracker system that runs with the contour. So it's NXT, and they're designed for this type of contours up to a certain part, certain percentage of grade. So we, we take that into consideration, because obviously moving dirt is expensive, and it also upsets the environment. So with this process, uh, as we go through design, we look at all that criteria and make sure that we're placing these trackers in the right locations to where it mitigates some of the, the, the steep terrains and those type of things. Also, there's, um, that gully and whatnot for the, for the animals to go through. You know, we looked at that area and said, it's not worth putting the trackers on there, because they won't work effectively. So through the process, we just continue to evaluate. Um, there's been numerous inner, um, numerous, uh, renditions of where we're putting the battery storage, because there is a dip there. And so we're, we're trying to place that to where we can use the existing fill on the site to make sure that we can, we can get that area flat. So we take a lot of the contours in consideration.
So is it, is it safe to say that of the 600 some-odd acres, some will have the topsoil or, you know, whatever you want to call it, taken off, regraded, and some will remain with the native grassland?
Yeah, depending, depending on the grades. It, it's just, it just depends on, on the contour of the land. And so we, we have a civil team that's working on that currently. And it'll be a part of our construction package. When we, we come out with documents, we can take a look.
Okay, um, and, oh, go ahead.
And just to mention, we do have a reclamation team. So what we do move, what dirt we do move, we come back and we, uh, people come in and look at it, so they're, grasp back into it, make sure it seeds, sprouts, and comes back. So there is going to be grass back there.
Do we, thank you. Do we, do we have that documented?
It will not be bare ground.
Okay.
That's just part of McCarthy's process.
I'm sorry, could you get closer to the mic, please?
Yeah, yes. It will not be bare ground. That's part of our process, is we come back in and reseed it and get it to sprout.
Um, okay, and so that kind of comes into the whole.
So back, back to the first question you asked. Is that documented in the, this, I didn't see that in here? The, the reclamation of the land?
Yeah, these type, these types of things, my opinion, they all need to be in writing. They all need to be documented, and the county needs to be in a position to follow up.
That's included in our decommissioning and reclamation plan at the end of the application.
This isn't decommissioning, though. This is.
The decommissioning and reclamation plan.
No, this is construction I'm talking about.
Oh, sorry.
Um, Exhibit J is the Sundance Vegetation Management Plan.
I saw that. I didn't, did I, it, and again, my, my eyes were starting to cross looking at all of this, but since you've got it in front of you, um, I, when I looked at that, I don't remember seeing, um, a landscaping plan, a seeding plan, a where are the shrubberies gonna go? Even though I think our zoning regulations require a landscaping plan for this type of a project. And did I miss, did I miss that?
I was completely misinterpreting your question. There is, yes.
That's okay.
Uh, there is a full vegetation maintenance of plan. Maintenance and management plan with this project has been approved by Kiowa Fire Department. We will have O and M site, site, on-site doing all that work as well.
And is that in the packet?
Yes, the vegetation maintenance plan? Yes, ma'am.
Wasn't that, though, the, the lawn mowers and the weed whackers and, you know, keeping the, the vegetation to a certain height? That's not what I'm looking for.
Yes, correct me if I'm wrong, but I have been on several sites. And yes, they keep the, the grass mowed 12 inches or lower.
Hmm.
That is for, comes into shading and all that if it gets too tall. But it'll be all native grass planted back, and it's grass that typically does not grow over 12 inches.
I wish I had some of that at my house.
And it takes, me and Ryan just worked on a, on a site together. It takes a lot to mow. We were back in Illinois, and it rains a lot back there. We found out, and it took us a lot to keep it mowed to it.
How about noxious weeds? I didn't see a noxious weed plant. Is that something you consider as part? Because, I mean, that's a big thing out here. I'm sure you guys have run into noxious.
I'm from Colorado.
Back there. Oh, yeah, they're very obnoxious. So, um, is that, sorry, um, is, is that part of the management plan we're talking about?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, as, as he just alluded to, right, it's expensive to, to cut 600 acres of grass and, and keep it maintained. So it's in our best interest to keep those, those weeds out of our facility, because those will continue to grow and grow well above what we want them to do.
Hmm.
So, yeah, absolutely planning on, on keeping those out, uh, and, and first and foremost by getting the, the seed mix that he mentioned established and, and making sure that it takes and, and prevents those weeds from, from establishing as well.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Of course.
I will also add that our, our vegetation management plan does have a section on noxious weeds.
That's it. I saw the cam, okay. I don't think I saw specific noxious weeds, but I'll, I'll go back and look at it again. Again, there's a lot of information. Um, but back to a landscaping plan, um, staff, isn't that something that should be in here, or at least for the SUR? I believe I saw that was a, somewhere in here, it's a requirement. And I, I did see the list of the plants that, that Core recommends, but I didn't see anything that, um, showed screening or, other than the, I'm sorry, the really ugly fencing. Can we, if, if this gets approved, and I, I think what I'm hearing from a lot of the people here, and just the, the pictures I looked at, that fencing does not fit in with the thousands and thousands of acres that surrounds this property. Can we get a landscape plan to provide screening? Trees, I know people that have a campground in this county. They've had to put trees in. And the, you know, the, the visual, whatever, it softens up. Uh, because this, this thing sticks out like a sore thumb. I don't know how else to say it. It, it. It, it, anyway. Let me just, okay. And I will try and, oh, I've got 10 minutes till we adjourn. Sorry about that. I just, back to the fire department, OEM and emergency plans, so let's just, I've always thought it makes more sense to, you know, hope for the best, but plan for the worst. So if there is a catastrophic event out at this location, has, and I know OEM didn't, I don't, I didn't see an awful lot like a, like a plan. X happens, people have to be evacuated, the sheriff's department has to be brought in, road and bridge needs to come in, the fire departments, the mutual aid departments all need to come in. Do we have an evacuation plan or something of that nature that would manage this? 'Cause if we don't, I, yeah, I mean, we see these types of things happen all the time, the train derailment, and where was it, New, in Pennsylvania a couple of years ago? So if the batteries catch on fire and you have the smells and you have that chemicals, how do we get our citizens out of here? We need a plan to do that, and I think we need something like that before we even agree to move forward with this. So, and, you know, back to the fire departments, do they, do they all have the required equipment to, to fight these types of fires? I did hear that there would be training, but we also have a lot of turnover in our volunteer departments, and we need to know that our citizens are gonna be safe and that our fire departments can respond to these situations, and what their response times are, and are those acceptable response times?
Yeah, I was just gonna add, just, it's kind of, I guess, both questions, but your, your previous question, I was pulling it up just to make sure I'm not thinking something out of context, 'cause this is from other parties, but, so to, to your first point, we do have, obviously in our emergency response plan, there's a battery-specific one and then a Cypress Creek-specific one. Just looking at it right now, there's a whole section on first aid measures, what happens if you, if you're ever in contact with X, can talk, contact with Y, public safety, a whole entire section on evacuation, what kinda clothing to wear, what kinda glasses to wear.
I, and I did, and I did see that.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm, I'm looking at a more overall holistic plan. You have to evacuate X amount of people, notify them, you know, we've...
Your county also has a comprehensive emergency management plan.
But do they have something for, for a situation like this? I didn't, I didn't, I didn't, I, I don't know where it is. I would look at it, but I think, I think this type of facility, excuse me, requires something specific for it, and to make sure that all of our fire departments have the protective equipment that they need.
That, that's why we, we have the fire department weigh in on these, so that, that's a good point that you're making, but it, it is something that's, that we're stuck on, and the comprehensive management plan is something that should feed into these conversations. Again, it's about, you know, having, having the right people at the table to, to have these levels of conversations. I don't think that staff is, for this, and I know that, that the applicant and the team and on the ground isn't ready to answer that question either.
I agree.
So, I mean, it, it just should add to your equation as you're, as you're going through this.
Okay.
I think, I'm thinking on that point, too, just myself and Ryan, obviously being the main two. I'm the development project manager, Ryan is the, the senior project manager, once it gets past the development process, and we will be the two, I mean, I, I have been, for the most parts, up to this day, but the, the, the two primary sources of communication with, with Kiowa Rattlesnake and Elizabeth Fire Department, and, and we, I have had a lot of conversations with them. So it's gonna be ongoing.
Yeah, and, and the Kiowa Fire Department has provided us with a, a, you know, a list of requirements to incorporate into our design, which we have done, right? You know, certain width roads, certain depth of, of stabilization, right, to make sure that those support their vehicles.
Fire break.
All that, yeah, fire break, all that. So we've, we've done everything that they've asked us to date and are more than happy to continue to coordinate and, and make sure that there's some kind of evacuation plan should, should there, you know, should someone identify a need for that.
Okay, thank you. I, I'd feel a lot better if we had all of this documented and in these packets before we, you know, make a decision how to, how to move forward on this. But I'm just one of those attention-to-detail people, and I think these are important details like you.
Well, it'd been good if Jerry was here to, to, again, validate information that is inspired outside of what we get to hear and what's, you know, physically in the, in the packet.
Yeah.
And so, because, you know, the ancillary question I, I finally found here was, if I remember right, County Road 154 is a dead end, right?
Mm-hmm. As that gentleman was saying.
Yeah, so, you know, that, that has a, that has a level of consideration for this project based upon our prevalent northwest winds to be addressed not only by, by you guys, but also by Jerry for us to understand how he is, and how he can address those citizens who are on County Road 154, you know, to give them a level of comfort. And so, again, you know, the relative experts based upon the complexity of a 1041 application and, you know, and the documentation that we have, you know, doesn't, doesn't relay all the, you know, right information. So, you know, I, I think it'd be important for, you know, someone like that to be here to answer some of our questions on the behalf of our citizens.
I, I'm pretty sure that we're not going to finish off the conversation tonight. I think the staff has reserved tomorrow night as, as a follow-on potential for this conversation. I hope the applicant is ready to, to stand by. Mark, I hope you don't turn into a pumpkin for tomorrow, 'cause I have questions for you. But at this point, I'd like to move to continue to this to date certain tomorrow at approximately 7:00 PM.
I think it's 6:00?
I, I'm okay with 6:00, but it's up to the folks that travel a good distance to come in, whether that's something that, that they're able to accomplish.
6:00 is fine.
Dee?
Yeah.
You can be a bad guy, it's okay.
No, it's okay. I know, I'm hanging out for so far, but, yeah.
Robert?
Yes, 6:00 is fine.
6:00 is okay.
Done?
Tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
What time?
6:00 PM. Good to go? Done? Okay. Dan? Van?
I don't have a problem with it.
Okay.
It's all we get this and done.
Yeah, I think we're, I think we're all of the same opinion there, so.
I would like...
Hang, hang, go ahead.
I would like to know more about where these panels are come from and the potential impact the tariffs could have, because it could be a significant game changer in the pricing.
Thailand and, and Vietnam are, are not...
And I didn't hear that clearly earlier.
Yes, sir, yeah, no, uh, we, we... Hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on. We're, we're done talking for, for a little while, till tomorrow. So go ahead and move to a, entertain a motion to move to a continuous tomorrow, 6:00 PM in this building.
A second.
That was Kyle.
And Mr. Chair, could you also just specify the actual date, please?
Yeah, it's 7:16, or what the heck, it's 4:16, thank you.
Thank you.
At 6:00 PM. And now the second applies, so Kyle seconded. I'll in favor, thank you, those are the words I'm looking for, wow.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thanks, everybody, appreciate your time. Just as a note, the folks that are in the planning commission cannot discuss anything with anybody in this room on these topics, so just keep that in mind. Thank you.